The time?
It's time.
This is, we're gonna call to order a workshop for the city of Holiday Island, city council. This is a workshop on discussing a draft of Title V of Health and Sanitation, Proposed Health and Sanitation Ordinances. Let's start out by, we don't have the Pledge of Allegiance on the agenda, but we're gonna do it anyway. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wes went over to run copies of stuff for himself, so he'll be back. I guess I can call attendance. Councilman Dumas?
Here.
Councilman Graves?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilman Pittman?
Here.
Councilman?
Elwood.
Elwood? Here.
I would've thought of it. The mayor of the council is present for the workshop. I'm gonna, let me start out by just setting the stage for the workshop here. The objective of the workshop is to gather information. No action will be taken. And any draft as presented does not imply approval or concurrence of the city council. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that what we're gonna be discussing today is just for discussion purposes only. Any action that will be taken will be taken in an actual council meeting at some future date. We're here to gather information and try to put together the best health and sanitation ordinances we can. With that said, the elephant in the room in Title V is trash collection. People have pretty strong opinions about trash collection. We have had, historically, it's been up to the property owners and residents to find a trash collection service. There are, I believe, four at the present time that operate in Holiday Island. And, of course, for, you know, for law-abiding citizens, that has worked out quite well. Problem is, not everybody's a law-abiding citizen. So I just wrote down a couple of, you know, objectives that I have as mayor of what we want, what I wanna see in the sanitation portion of the health and sanitation ordinance. And first and foremost, we need to comply with the law. Secondly, we need to eliminate illegal dumping and trash burning in Holiday Island, which is a growing problem. We need to minimize wear and tear on the roads. And we need to provide a mechanism for illegal dump site cleanup if there is a, if there is a problem. A secondary objective would be to minimize the number of days a week that trash collection containers are sitting at the end of the streets or at the ends of the driveways. Other people may have other goals and objectives, but those are the ones that I had in mind when taking a look at the draft of the ordinance. So with that in mind, you know, as far as complying with the law, I guess I could review two different sections of code that I'm primarily, you know, concerned with. One is Arkansas Code Annotated 8-6-202, which is, which states it is the purpose of this subchapter and it is declared to be a policy of this state to regulate the collection and disposal of solid waste in a manner that will protect the public health and welfare, prevent water and air pollution, prevent and spread the spread of disease and the creation of nuisances, conserve natural resources, and enhance the beauty and quality of the environment. So those are the stated objectives of the state of Arkansas relative to solid waste collection and disposal. There's a whole section of code relative to this covering the responsibilities of local municipalities, counties, and the state, federal regulations, environmental regulations. You know, you could spend a week just collecting information on all of the codes that apply when it comes to solid waste collection and disposal. But the one that, you know, specifically impacts cities is 8-6-211, which is municipal solid waste management systems. I'll just read Section A again of a lengthy section of code. "All municipalities shall provide a solid waste management system which will adequately provide for the collection and disposal of all solid waste generated or existing within the incorporated limits of the municipality or in the area to be served and in accordance with the rules and orders of the Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission. The governing body of the municipality may enter into agreements with one or more municipalities, counties, or regional solid waste management districts, private persons or trusts, or with any combination thereof, to provide a solid waste management system or any part of a system for the municipality, but the agreement shall not relieve the parties of the responsibility under this subchapter." So in a nutshell, what that says is that, as a city, we could continue to do what we're doing. We could continue to let four companies operate in Holiday Island, but in the final analysis, we are responsible for what they do. Just because we allow them to operate doesn't mean that we can shift the responsibility for what they do and how they operate to them. So one of the concerns that, you know, we would have as a city is, what kind of resources do we have to follow up behind people, you know, anybody that's operating in the city to make sure that they're complying with a stack of, you know, environmental regulations this high we have no expertise in? So that's kind of where my thinking is when I approached drafting this ordinance. First up on the agenda is, I listed it as a question and answer with George Wolbright from Carroll County Solid Waste. So George?
Okay.
Why don't you come up? I think you could sit by the table there.
Okay, I would like to bring Gary and April with me. There's a reason I want to bring them with me.
Bigger target, more targets?
But no, I am George Wolbright, Director of Carroll County Solid Waste District. Carroll County Solid Waste, this is very great, Director of District Operations and April Shaw. Also, in a sense, she is a Director of the company too. She's over the financing and administration part of the company. Together, the three of us are the top heads, the top chief of Carroll County Solid Waste District. Carroll County Solid Waste became a district in July of 2020.
Just hang on one second, George. Is the mic picking this up?
BJ, can you hear the speaker? Yes, she can.
Okay. In July of 2020, we became ADQ, permitted us to become a district. And you don't, they just don't allow anybody. We became the 19th district in Arkansas, a single county district consisting only of Carroll County. ADQ just don't allow anyone to become a district. You've got to qualify, in a sense, to become that district. We qualified by doing that for promoting recycling. We actually recycle, and Gary can tell you what we ran through our recycling center, our processing center and here. We recycle the more than the city of Little Rock does. We promote recycling. We've got an educational chair that we use to go around to the schools and whoever wants to, wants us to accommodate them with this. But we're, what's good about us becoming a district is we care about Carroll County. We want to provide the best service for Carroll County that we can. We want to take care of the refuse and the recycling needs of the citizens of Carroll County. Dan, you wanted me to talk a little bit about the benefits of a single hauler in a community. There are a lot of benefits to having just a single hauler in the community. As far as Carroll County Solid Waste District, the community of Holiday Island is within our district. Mayor Dan actually sits on our board. Carroll County Solid Waste District's board is a board member, a voting board member.
So in a sense, we is controlling what we do?
Yes, and that's why I'm saying that. In a sense, Dan has a vote in controlling on what we do.
Let me, you know, just as a matter of full disclosure, I probably should've said that going in, that I do sit on the board of Carroll County Solid Waste and I am a voting member on that board. However, I will not have a vote when it comes to passing the ordinance that we're discussing here. So I don't feel like I have that conflict of interest. It's up to the, it's up to the city council to pass the ordinance.
Aren't you on that board by virtue of being the mayor of the city and not for any other reason?
Not necessarily. George can explain this, but the district was formed by the three Class 1 cities in the county. And then in addition to that, because they also serve the large rural area, they had more or less at-large members on the board that represented rural areas. Holiday Island had a representative on that board, but the representative represented Holiday Island as a rural, as part of the rural area, not part of the city. When we incorporated, it just, Doug Taylor was the representative for Holiday Island. He and I discussed it and he thought that it would be better for me as the mayor to be on that board. However, I believe that Doug ended up remaining on the board as an at-large rural member anyway. So he and I both now are on the board. But, yeah, the, I offered to, you know, to sit on the board and they accepted me.
There are, as I was saying, there's many benefits to having a single hauler in your community. Less traffic from a trash truck on the roads. Right now, I believe, I believe, three days a week here in Holiday Island, you guys have us and you'll have ACE one day and you'll have maybe Waste Management Republic one day and maybe OSAJ, maybe some more haulers. But the, with a single hauler, and Holiday Island is more than likely going to need to be, from the studies that I've done, set up on two different days because of the vast majority of it, because we've got, we've got the rest of the counties that we do too. But Carroll County Solid Waste uses single axle trucks. Now, there's a single axle truck versus a twin axle truck in the rear of the truck. There's benefits to both of those sides, but on chip and seal highways, the single axle is better. When you turn a double axle truck, it seems to roll the chip and seal and the single axle does not. But the single axle will seem to groove the pavement more because it's a single axle and there's more weight on that axle. But what Holiday Island, or Carroll County Solid Waste does is we use smaller trucks, what we call pack rack trucks, they're smaller, like a U-Haul type truck, that we run down a lot of roads and we try to keep our big trucks on the main roads and use these smaller trucks for a satellite truck to keep them off the smaller roads and from turning around in the middle of sections.
So right now, you're on the roads three days a week?
No, right now, we're on the roads one day a week.
One day, okay, and you're gonna go to?
We have approximately 900 customers in the Holiday Island area. But we have customers, we run routes every day of the week. It will, the fast, Dan, is it around 1,400, someone? Now that you've become a city, 1,500? I'm running right now on one day a week to pick up the 900 customers. I'm running, and this is not counting my recycling trucks, but my recycling trucks are pickups and smaller trucks. I'm running three, four trash trucks on Wednesday out here. Three big trucks and a pack rack truck to do it on Wednesday. To add the other, to add the other Holiday Island residents to that, I would need to, I would need to rein in, incorporate another day in that. Now, with me incorporating another day though, I would run portions of the town the one day and portions the other day. We wouldn't be running back over the same portion, the same area.
And it wouldn't take, you said you had 900 customers here?
We have approximately 900.
So, you know, it wouldn't take, you know, it wouldn't take a third again as much time to pick up the rest of them or 40% more time to pick up the rest of them because you're driving right past houses that, you know?
That is correct, yes.
You could just stop.
We're passing a lot of these houses.
You gotta drive past houses.
Yeah, but those big trucks with waste management hats?
Yes.
They chipped and sealed. I rode one year and within a year, it was dumped. I had, there were two people on the road to use them and it didn't throw the chip and seal up.
They seemed to be a lot more than just?
And then, you know, that's it. With multiple haulers, you know, you may have some, you may have some by road that's got us and then they may have waste management down at the end where that waste management truck's gonna have to run that old road to get down to their customers.
The, you know, the type of truck, I think, has a bearing on it, but I think more than anything, it's the fact that if you have four haulers, and let's assume that each one of them has 25% of the business, that, you know, there's four trucks going past these houses every, you know, at least once a week.
Those great big?
Yeah, picking up on one and then driving past three, picking up one, driving past three. And, you know, it's, it's in reality, it's four times the wear and tear on the roads than what you'd have if you had one hauler.
You're gonna be able to do the island in two days? Is that the plan, that would be the plan?
Yes.
Different parts of the island?
Well, right, yeah, the island, as far as the island?
No, I mean Holiday Island, not just?
Okay, yes, I, yes, with, if there's around 1,400, 1,500, yes, in two days.
What about the commercial?
The commercial would be in with, it would be in on that day.
I'm sure you're gonna touch on, I don't wanna steal your thunder if you're gonna touch on this, but with my background, I, in the past, have had to handle the liability of one of our insurers in a super fund site. And I know that that type of situation is joint in several. So can you kind of touch on why you would, it would be safe to go with you than some people we don't know where their trash is going?
We're, like I said, we're a district, we're ADQ licensed, you know, we have a transfer stations license. We're environmental officers. We're licensed under ADQ, me and yours, as environmental officers, so we follow every?
No, I know, that's kind of not my point. My point is, is you can find out, if you're a small business owner, you could put a battery and have somebody haul it off and it gets in the super fund site and you're jointly liable for the whole thing. Doesn't matter that you didn't do it. That's the area that I wanted you to kind of?
Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay, I think what you're asking is the liability for Holiday Island.
I know the answer, I want you to?
Yes, okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding. Okay, we are insured, okay? Both vehicle, transfer station, we have inspectors. We take it to a permitted landfill that's in Tonny Town that is, who knows? It's inspected quarterly. As, and we have to, part of our permitting at the transfer is we have to have a Class C operator onsite at all times that the transfer is open, which means they have to verify what's being dumped, okay? If there's a battery that gets in there or a tire that is in that trash, that Class C operator has to make sure that that is removed and not hauled. Now, as far as the liability, I believe if I'm not mistaken, once we or the solid waste hauler picks up the trash, that does become ours.
You are not mistaken, yes, it is.
So you're no longer?
I'm thinking about it from the other direction. I don't know if everybody realizes that if they do not use a service like yours and it gets into the wrong place, they're responsible even though they had nothing to do with where it went or how it got there and didn't have any?
There's illegal dumps that are cleaned up and they find names in there and make them?
That's exactly what I'm getting at. They can find my name and an illegal dump and I'm responsible.
They say, well, I'm paying to haul my stuff off, well, the dump's your problem now.
Yep, we have run into that.
You know, we've run into stuff like that.
Yeah, I have too, I have.
They had, they actually contracted with somebody else and we found, we were told about an illegal dump. Went to check it, it had their name and stuff in it. They said, well, we contracted with them. We did not penalize or go after them. All we can mostly do is excise caution.
But under ADQ rules under Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, it is the person's responsibility enough to?
The story I had, it is an aside. I had a small gas station insurer in Georgia whose service went on strike and they hired somebody else for about three days to haul off some stuff. It ended up in a super fund site and I'm going to mediation and I'm saying, well, we've got a small part of this. And attorney said, well, no, this is jointly separate liability. You owe the same amount that Exxon does. Holy crap, you know? But from our standpoint?
Yes.
That alleviates our liability, but also other citizens of Holiday Island. And then that's, I'm not sure everybody understands how dangerous that can be.
We're held to a lot higher standards than just a trash company.
Yes, we are also, we license any small hauler in our district. We license, they got to go through us to get their licensing. And they've got to follow ADQ regulations and all that too, but we will, you know, we, if they break the law or do anything wrong, we pull their license. As a district, they're licensed to us. And we will, we make them hold up to that standard. Not saying they're not gonna do that, but it would be, it would be us because we are environmental officers, licensed to ADQ, to investigate any wrongdoing and to follow up, ground tickets, see if they can take the district court. Does that answer your question?
No, I do? Kind of already knew the question, answer, I just wanted?
And do all of the haulers, you know, you said that anybody that wants to pick up trash in Carroll County, including Holiday Island, they have to come to you to get a license?
Yes.
Yes, they have to be permitted through ADQ and we license them to go this way.
But they're not required to bring the trash they pick up to your transfer station, right?
No, but they do have to report it quarterly and pay the tipping fees whether they take it out of state or out of district.
Not required, no. As a district, as the director of a district, anything in Carroll County, I can force them to bring to our transfer station. I don't. So they are not required, no, but there is a provision in there where, yes, I can, if I say you gotta take what you pick up in Carroll County to my transfer station, I can?
See, that's my concern is that, that, we don't have to worry about the people that follow the law. We have to worry about the people that don't.
Yes, yeah, let me take, someone's never heard of?
The, you know, the statute clearly says that the city is ultimately responsible. And so if, if somebody, and I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody that's doing this today, I'm not saying that anybody is doing this today. I'm just saying that somebody, you know, somebody, the potential, there is a potential today that somebody would start up a business, a trash collection business. They'd go to you, they'd get their license and everything else. They'd start picking up trash, but they would not take it to your transfer station, but they would take it someplace else and dump it and then all of a sudden, you know, 10 years down the road, we find out that there's an illegal trash dump somewhere, maybe a super fund site that needs to be cleaned up. Who's responsible? The city of Holiday Island, because we allowed it to happen. And, you know, and I'm, you know, saying that we're not gonna have the resources to be able to follow up behind several companies to make sure they're complying with the law. That's my main concern with having multiple carriers. But I have had experience with that, not as a, not as an elected official or anything, but when we lived in Missouri, we lived up in a subdivision up in the county and there was a, there were two trash haulers that serviced our subdivision. One of them was legitimate, the other one was not so much. And he would, he would pick up trash and he'd take it back to his place out in the country. He'd dump it all out on the ground and then start sorting through it to see if there was anything in there that he could sell for scrap iron or, you know, make a little extra money off of. And the rest of it just lay there. And it became a big, open, you know, garbage dump.
We have one of those on Holiday Island right now. I am sure. And I can give you the address. And it's Dogwood Lane, number one. And?
I actually have a citation there, sir.
You did?
Yes.
I'm telling you right now, I have?
It was bad.
Well, it's not just bad, we live next door, right? And it's not even just a matter of the trash. They have three dogs running loose, all puppies. They have a Great Dane running loose. They have a back porch where the Great Dane just poops out there. It's covered, it's stooled.
They have a back porch where the Great Dane just poops out there, it's covered, it's strewed.
Yeah, I have photos of all this.
I have sat out on my back porch to have a cup of coffee in the morning and looked over and seen a gentleman on the top of the deck taking a shit off the back of the deck. Um, you know, so if you wanna talk about trash, you have it in Holiday Islands.
I know about that.
That is a dump right there.
Yeah, there, there's two different, there's two different issues, there's people, you know, property owners or residents illegally dumping in their own yard, or in the neighbor's yard, uh, and then there's, you know, uh, commercial haulers that we would have to police to make sure.
To me, if it's the same amount, it doesn't matter, I mean, there's nothing back there.
Anything to do with solid waste, we are authorized to issue.
And as a district, I mean, you gotta take this seriously, uh, Mayor Dan told us about this, and we, the two addresses we took care of yesterday.
So, what's the process after?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I issued, I issued a citation to his face, uh, they, uh, said they will comply, give them thirty days, if they do not comply, uh, contact the prosecuting attorney and go to court. And, uh, believe it or not, we've never had one go to court. I mean, 'cause the fines are, they're, when ADQ gets involved, they're insane, I mean, they're not little.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're not little few.
I haven't seen anything like this on Holiday Island, it's the worst ever.
We've been, we visited yesterday, I mean, yes, we, we issued a citation, they said they'll comply, we'll see.
Yeah.
But if not, we can take, we can take.
If they don't comply, we will.
And our sheriff and our prosecutors seem to be on board with this, I mean, it, it seems like.
And I know this is off the subject, but what do we do about free running dogs?
That's, that's, uh, that's another workshop.
You got a lot of coke.
Yeah.
I have a question, what, uh, what legal authority do you have over a Missouri collection service that would be collecting in Holiday Island?
They still have to be.
They have to be licensed through us on what they pick up in Carroll County. If they're coming into Carroll County and picking up trash, say Ace.
I don't know the names.
Or work also, they are licensing Carroll County businesses, or they can't come into Carroll County where they get trash.
Okay. So, if they do something wrong, do you have?
Something wrong, as a district.
Can we hold it down? This is a recorded workshop, so if, if there's background chatter, the mic won't pick up the people that need to be recorded.
So, if they do something wrong, what legal authority do you have as a district over them if their business is in Missouri?
We can keep them from collecting in Carroll County.
We can, yeah, that's basically about the only thing we can do, we can keep them collecting now.
There are fines.
Okay.
They are fines.
Because they made agreements with you to operate under certain terms and conditions, is why you can find them, okay?
You know, the Missouri border is Carroll County.
Right.
We're not gonna keep Carroll County beautiful unless we can keep the surrounding area also, so, you know, we're concerned. And I don't, you know, I'm not here to talk trash about any other trash haulers or anything, but, uh, Ace, when Ace was caught burning and, and dumping up there and burning on his place, you know, we got Missouri ADQ involved, and, uh, and they took care of that, uh, the Missouri DEQ anyway.
What about?
So, we are concerned about what happens outside, and the haulers that come into Carroll County too. But as far as licensing, we can only restrict what they do in Carroll County.
What can you do as an agency or a district to help us with the Missouri side of the border and dumping that appears to be illegal to me? What can you do about that for us?
It's a different agency, it's more, we have ADQ in Arkansas, in Missouri we have more, and, uh, I really don't know, I, we haven't dealt a whole lot with them, have we?
The Ace was the only one that I.
Can you work with Missouri to resolve the issue?
Yes, they would work with us, they did in that case, they worked with us, uh, they resolved it.
Missouri has different laws than us too, I mean, it's kind of. I live up by Blue Island, and right across the border in Missouri, their fire chief says pile your stuff up there and burn it, it's no big deal. At Arkansas, it's a league, you know, so, I mean, Missouri is, they do have different rules on us, you know?
Yes, sir. Um, I guess probably ten or fifteen years ago, when you guys first started servicing Holiday Island, uh, we were trying, we were, uh, we were in the process of trying to make it mandatory, and one of the big issues that we're gonna have in trying to do that is part-time people.
Vacation.
How do you, how do you deal with, you know, we, I've got three people on my street that are part-time residents.
April, uh, why don't you stand up and help us out on this?
I mean.
The basically, uh, if we're in as a single hauler though, uh, you know, you guys are going, you guys are going to want, it depends on what Holiday Island wants.
That's what I was gonna say, it's kind of.
It just, you know, it's how you want your, how you want your contract set up.
Eureka Springs, they're required to, it doesn't matter vacation, if you're a resident there, you're required to have cash service. But, I mean, it depends on what y'all want, really.
April, you want.
Do, do you have other plans, is what I think he's getting at, I also have somebody on my neighbor that's probably there five weekends a year, it's a little harsh to make them pay, pay the same monthly fee that I do for trash pickup every week.
I mean, this, this, this is gonna be a.
Yes, you're absolutely correct, I do bill it, um, I know exactly which part of my, West County, over there around the lake, Holiday Island, a lot of them are, this is their second home.
Right.
So, when it's nice weather, they'll be down here for a couple weeks, a month, two months. Bottom line, it is what you have.
But what can you do, give us some options that you could implement.
What you can do is, you can do like a two-bag service, call us when you're here, we'll open it back up, charge you, call us when you leave, and we close it. Okay, that's one way, second way, we can do a minimal monthly charge, whether you're here or not.
Because?
That would be a standard.
Uh, part-timers used to be one of the bigger offenders, because, you know, they show up a weekend now, a weekend three months from now.
Exactly.
They got off, they generate all this trash, and they got a whole place to put it, so they, they figure out where to put it.
Yeah, yes.
I have a place over in northeast Arkansas, it was sort of the same way, and they, and I know y'all, they put it on our assessment, they charged us six months before they were there and out, because I explained to my work with the trash cabinet, and we disconnected and all that, like, now you gotta pay six months, so it's really whatever y'all, whatever y'all.
So, you, um.
What they did, I, I visited a few weekends in the sun, they charged me six months service, I could put it out when I was here. So, it's really whatever y'all want. You have, you have, um, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a, a reference again, when we lived in Michigan, um, all, you, you, you bought, um, you bought bags from the city. The bags had specific markings on them for, for garbage. You could generate as much garbage as you wanted to, as long as you were willing to keep buying bags.
True.
But you couldn't put anything out on the curb that wasn't in a city bag.
True.
And, uh, you know, for, so for part-timers, now they could just buy bags.
Yeah, we have bag bags.
And when they're here, they use up one of their bags, and when they need more, they, they get more.
That, that will work for fifty percent or sixty percent of the people, the other ones would say, hang on, do that.
We issue, we issue fines.
How, how do you go fines, do you ever?
You can charge a minimal service though, and when they're here, we'll pick it up, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
It's really what's.
Yeah, it, I mean, cities.
I, I don't think the bag thing work.
Did you charge for the bags?
The bag thing also, what's keeping people from other cities getting over the bags and setting them out, I mean, that.
Well, I know.
The bag thing. Well, I'll tell you what they do, I had, I had a condo here as a part-time home for two years before we moved permanently, and we, we had trash service, and there were, uh, there weren't months, but there were several weeks in between us being here, and, uh, i- if we left it out for, for the collection day here, we had one of the neighbors take it back behind, and, and when we came back two weeks later or whatever, it would be full.
Yeah.
It would be full of people from most of the condos.
Yes, illegal dumping is a serious issue.
And the thing about the bags, to her point, if, if you eat trash bags for any length of time.
Dogs.
I, I, I've never seen some of that dog.
Well, they, they supply the dogs and the trash haul and went home, you know, I mean, it's a no-win situation there, so.
When you come to get the trash, take the dog too.
Yeah, please, would you, please?
If they're required, if they're required to have the service, you know, maybe, maybe a minimum fee.
I think the minimum fee thing.
A minimum fee, and then when they're here, they call us, and we pick up their stuff, I mean.
I know there are, I want us, three or four, maybe.
We got a lot of P and Bs now too.
Yeah, from Tulsa, that, over in West County around the lake, that's their, like, second home. And it, several years ago, when we first started doing it, because it became an issue, we charged them a flat five dollars a month.
All I know is, when I goes on to BLC, we were trying to put in mandatory, and that's a pushback you got, is it, you know?
Yeah.
See, you got, you got Eureka, and it's kind of a little, they pay regardless, don't they? I mean, if they have water, they have to have trash, it don't matter if you're there and they're putting it out.
Do you, I'll use, uh, it's probably on a volunteer basis out on, uh, Beaver Lake, 'cause they got a lot of part-time people.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's, it's, you know, vacation, it depends on, you know, most of it is, just tell us when you're here, I'll reopen it, your charge based on how long you're here, and then you close it.
Good.
So, we get a lot of phone calls.
And then maybe, maybe they pay a minimal during the.
So, this, so we get into this, you're gonna give us the options, yeah?
It's totally up to how.
Yeah, they, separate, separate from the, you know, the, the contract, whatever, whatever contract we end up with, with, with whatever carriers, uh, we have contacts with four cities.
Won't be part of the order.
They are.
Uh, you know, the O eighty twenty, or it's probably better than that, it's probably ninety ten or ninety five five, but, you know, the majority of people will do what's right, but you got.
Oh, always, always.
Well, I think that's why you have to have some sort of minimum for each water meter.
I, I, I like that idea, you know?
But, but it should be fairly low to allow those really part-time that aren't here hardly at all.
Yeah.
To get their trash collected, but also.
And we do, it's, it's.
To prevent people from skipping by the system.
If they pay that minimal, we don't pick them up till they, uh, which, whatever y'all decide, I think.
Well, they should pick it up when it's out there, well.
Then, then, then you got someone pays minimal, and they're sitting out every week, we wouldn't know, I mean, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, you got a neighbor that was sitting out there, or someone in town.
And, you know, the people bought the house down on Duke Road from this, Lake Carols, I, I guess they're there about five or six times a year.
What about bulk pickup?
Yeah.
Once a year, once a year.
Well, now, that's on my spring, and I, I wanted to let you guys know, uh, while I was in here, our spring bulky cleanup that we do for free, I'd like to do that first Saturday, if you guys will approve that, uh, May, this year. That's when I'd like to schedule that.
And that's for all our current customers?
But then, now, let's say bulky pickup, uh, through the year though, uh, if you don't wanna wait for that, and you've got something like a couch that wants you out, you call the office, we make a work order.
We charge?
And we charge them, and, and our driver picks up.
So, that, that service is available now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to know about.
Yes, to all of our customers out there.
There are guys who are out, and they call and say, hey, I got a couch out there, ready?
Yeah.
You know, if they, they don't call, they sit at the curb, you know, but, I mean, call.
We try to, but it depends on what the item is, and if there's two, two people, because I'm, I, I'm not comfortable doing the work order for just the driver to pick up a full-size couch. That's dangerous to me.
I read down through this someplace, and then, and, you know, the bulk pickup, the pickable residences that are allowed to curbside bulky collection for, for pickup apartment complexes, other multifamily housing units, consistent, are not eligible. Uh, that, you know, we've got some apartments, and we've got townhouses out.
We have a, we have a transfer station in Miracle, we can take it to anytime, but, but, we usually have it at apartments, and the reason is, I mean.
I know, but each one of them has a water meter, so they already, right?
Yeah.
Each, each apartment, each townhouse condo's got a water meter, so they're paying. So, why?
They're paying individually for trash collection, is what he's saying.
That would be individual, because they.
We pick up their dumpster every, every week, I mean, I, I, I miss something.
About bulky, I'm just, the bulky cleanups at apartments and townhouses and stuff, Holiday Island has, I, I mean, you look at the doors and that.
We got eight flexes, four flexes.
No, it's, it's just like when we do that, those places, we don't have, everybody is, we don't pick up, they don't pick up their own trash pickup.
You know, they're, I think, I think the townhouse, the townhouse associations have, you know, the people pay a monthly fee, and, and that trash collection is included in it, so I, I don't know.
Because there's a limit, limited amount, you know, if they're paying for a dumpster, we pick up that dumpster every week, but, you know, the way, the way I see it, it may be wrong, we like, we do the cleanups at Green Forest and everywhere else, the apartments we skip, 'cause if we didn't, there'd be a pile out there bigger than our truck, and everything people collect, and.
I, I don't know, I, I see.
It's part of their business, it's part of their business, it's kind of.
I, I see that as a pushback that we're gonna probably get, you know, from, uh.
Well, I think, you, uh, when you do your, uh, spring and fall, or whatever you're gonna do this year, that, you wouldn't pick up at apartments?
We, we have it, no, we have it in the best.
I think this is something we probably talked about.
Why would there be pushback now, is there pushback now?
We haven't picked up from businesses in the past.
We say if it's commercial, when, uh, in apartments and stuff are commercial, you know, if somebody leaves and leaves all their couches and all their furniture and stuff, that's just part of their, that's an expense they're gonna have to give.
But that could be denied me if I pay.
We will pick it up, you know, like.
For trash service, apply them here.
They sit out there at the dumpster, and call and say, hey, let's move that, and let somebody step, we'll pick it up and charge them.
As a renter, all right, in an apartment building, how can you say? Uh-huh?
Well, do, do you distinguish condos and townhouses from apartment buildings?
Okay, yeah, all right, I didn't know, I'm, 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 sorry.
I think, I think these condo associations.
Say that again?
A duplex or something like that, that's really just two residents.
Right.
That's not a, a business.
Okay.
And now, I, as operations manager, when we come out here to Holiday Island, we got everything, unless it was like a business store.
Uh, the church.
Uh, a church, everything else, I mean, all these apartments and businesses, if they was our customer.
They're our customer.
Uh, uh, but what we didn't do was like a gas station, a, uh, a hotel, a, a business.
And, you know, and I understand about Holiday Island, that if you offer that to them, they'll save up their trash for the whole year until we have our cleanup, and there'll be something out there, side of two trash trucks, we just picked everything out.
Well, or if you do a hotel or something, you know, they will, they might be wanting to change out their addresses. And the cleanup actually cost us, the yearly cleanups we did for free cost us twenty thousand dollars, is what it cost us.
That's what we spent last year, over there, it was twenty, twenty thousand.
One of the things I, I think about is we've got a lot of elderly people out here, including many of us.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, that, that are not capable of moving the stuff out of their house, or out of their yard, or, eh, to the street even. And, uh, I know some depended upon Ace, because Ace, they would call Ace, they would actually come up to the garage, pick something up, take it to their truck when they wanted it hauled off, and that was one of the things they really liked about Ace.
Yeah.
We do elderly handicapped, yeah.
But we will not go in your residence and do the same to them.
Yeah.
But if you got it on the outside of the residence, you'd get it.
That's a, that's a.
You say, hey, how far does that get to my garage door, go grab it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, if you didn't offer that, they're gonna call, hire some guy down the street with a truck, come get it, and no telling where that's gonna end up.
No, we do that for the cities.
Yeah, we always.
We do that for county.
One, one other question, uh, I've interviewed a lot of people, uh, and I, I've had Carroll County ways for fifteen years, I guess, whenever they, we finally talked to you guys, uh, what is, what is Richard's name?
Roger.
Roger, minor.
And all, who is the pre, the first director?
Um, the first one, number four, Brian Buchanan, and then it was Roger Minor.
We have a gentleman here that's Roger Minor.
Okay, well, anyway, the guy I was dealing with is one who's a state representative, and he be.
Phil Jackson.
Phil Jackson, okay, nice guy.
That's the third one.
Okay, I, I dealt with Phil Jackson quite a bit.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, he wasn't going to take on Holiday Island unless it was, um. Uh, you know, he wasn't going to take on Holiday Island unless it was, um, universal or whatever you, you turn, you know, we had that, you know, or, uh, you know, everybody. And, and, but, talking into tape, and now you say you have nine hundred, so you've got to provide, uh.
We're actually growing, as a percentage wise, we're growing more in Holiday Island than we are anywhere else.
Well, I think most of the new people that are moving in, you know, go with you guys. And, but, but what I, the original question is, I, I've got, I think now, uh, what percentage when we go to the, what's the term I want, the universal?
Exclusive hall?
Exclus- there you go, exclusive contract with you, what kind of redu- reduction in, in rates are we gonna see?
Well, we love that, that rate trap now, uh, when we first started coming out here, our, Phil had the rates set, and when we gained a certain amount of customer, Phil actually lowered the rates, uh, as director. Uh, not a big percentage, but he lowered them because we were getting more customers and it was costing us less to come out here.
Right, you're making more stops.
Now, as a, uh, we, we have you guys right now at a pretty good rate. Now, if we get it exclusive with all the customers, that will lower, I'm not, I've got to set up a new figure. Uh, you know, to see what that would be.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, it, it would, uh, as an exclusive contract, you guys signing the contract with us, it, it will lower.
Uh, I've got a question about recycling. Of the nine hundred customers now, how many are, are taking advantage of recycling?
Not a clue, but we offer it to everyone.
In Holiday Island, most of, most of.
We, yeah, we, we offer it to every one of them, uh, but I really don't know how many participate. I know it's a big round.
In Holiday Island, it's a big percentage.
The truck that comes out here brings more garbage than, than Eureka or Bear.
I'm gonna say ninety, ninety plus percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Of our people in Holiday Island recycle for us.
Sorry, I don't mean to piss along here, I have to go to work. Um, first of all, what is the policy on dogs as it stands right now?
We have no policy.
Wow, okay.
Because we haven't gotten to animal control yet and, and.
Well, I didn't know if we had a previous order that's in place or not.
No.
Okay, that is a big problem.
This year.
Everywhere.
You got team herpes, you got.
My other question is.
Something in their covenants?
How long does this process take as far as my neighbors and their trash, how long, approximately how long will that process take?
They have thirty days?
They have thirty days to clean it up, and then after that, we turn it over to the prosecuting attorney and, I don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully you fly.
Disposal, okay.
So far, mo- so far, everybody we've messed with complies, you know, and some of them say, and I know it's your neighbor, but, uh, some of them, some of them, they'll start claiming, say, I couldn't get it this thirty days, we'll give them thirty more, I mean, we, we would rather than comply than give them a ten thousand dollar fine and not really.
We got the same.
They're not gonna pay anyways. You know, most guys are prosecuting attorney, I don't know.
I really feel this case, in thirty days, it will be cleaned up, and.
I disagree with you there, but that's okay.
Well, I don't know, I'm just.
I, I look forward to this, um, by the time you get to the prosecuting part, they will have disappeared and it will be left that way, is my theory.
And then, then we can issue a citation to the property owner, the bad thing is, most of the property owners we issue to out here live in some other state.
They do, she lives in Oklahoma, I believe, yeah.
I mean, it's, Holiday Island's a little hard, 'cause I really, most of the, we've done in this area, they live in another state.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is.
If you, if you Google the, uh, you know, street view of the address of the property owner of that property, it's the front, it's, it's a bank.
Really?
So, I don't know if the property is.
Probably in default.
Yeah.
In foreclosure or, or what, and again, but, we can, we cannot do a thing about what somebody's property, all we can do is household trash.
Yeah.
I mean, they can do whatever, that's not.
As far as old cars or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, we can't do nothing about that, I mean, if you see like.
What concerns me is the animals, if you're alls, you know.
But Dan.
Probably, none besides the environment, but.
There and see the bags of trash and stuff like that, we can do something, everything else.
If the property owner, if the occupants were to move out and the property owner were to give us permission, couldn't we get a crew together and clean it up after the people leave, if they left?
Or what if they paid you the fine and you hired someone?
And I don't know if y'all, I mean, a lot of the, we'll get complaints from Berryville or Green Forest or whatever, and I go and look at them, it's something I can't do nothing about. I mean, I usually call their code enforcement officer, they take them over, uh, but if there is, all, all we can do is trash, honestly.
Right, just like yours.
There is a way for the, the, the city, and we don't, that's part of this, these ordinance, and once, once we have the ordinances in place and we have, have a code enforcement officer, we would have some recourse to go in and clean up property and charge it. Put a lien against the property gate.
But what, what about just, you know, if, if a bunch of neighbors got together and got the permission of the property owner to go clean it up, because it was disgusting to them?
Well, they could.
Yeah, so, I think there are options. Because I, I understand, we don't have the power to do anything until we have an ordinance on the books.
Right.
We don't have any legal power or authority over anything.
There you go.
As an individual citizen or a group of citizens, if you got the property owner's permission and they were gone and the occupants weren't there.
How do we find the property owners?
Oh, it's on the county tax records.
Okay.
If it's a bank or if it's an individual, you'll find them.
Okay, and is there anything that'd be done about the dog feces on their back deck, I can smell it on my back porch, it is.
You could, you, if, if you can get the property owner, as, as long as the occupants aren't there.
Yeah, it's, it's unreal.
Yeah, I've had the health department, we've had D H S.
I'm kinda surprised that the health department hadn't known something about it.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause they, they fasten on.
Well, I went up there yesterday to the front door, it's covered in, um.
Insulation?
Insulation, broke up insulation, pink insulation all across the porch, and these kids are in this.
Yes.
We didn't see no kids, but, but D H S and the apartment.
Weren't we told that V H S was out there and.
They have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna call them again today, just, you guys.
Mainly.
We have really tried, me and her and the owner of our property, who is right around the corner, and, you know, I can feel her frustration because she owns property next to it, you know, um, and if it wasn't, I've lived by people that were messing, but this is beyond that, you know, it's way beyond that, so.
Anyway, uh, if, if this exclusive contract for trash collection is just a stick, you know, if we can get people.
I'm sorry, thinking of my.
Trash collection, then these kind of situations shouldn't be able to develop, I mean, so.
They would have an opportunity to, to be able to, uh, get rid of their trash at that.
Right, I mean, we, before it got to be the kind of problem.
How are you, I got a question, I won't throw in a, a, or how are you gonna enforce that everyone does it?
Do what?
How are y'all gonna enforce that everyone does it?
Trash pickup, that, um, that's to be discussed, to be determined.
That was the thought when you said that, when you said that.
Shouldn't you discuss that clause with them, since they're here, if that's, that's gonna.
The way the other cities do it, and I don't know if y'all can, the way the other cities do it, they bill it on their water bill, and it's, it's required, and if they don't, they, if they have water, they, they don't have water, they pay.
You know, they probably have city municipal water, but we don't.
I need to have, I need to have a discussion with the, with the district first, because, and with the city attorney.
Well, the way this read, it was on their, it, it was their responsibility, the way this statute, or this ordinance reads.
We can't enforce that they.
This, this document says.
That's what I was asking, I, I don't know.
This document says, if the people don't pay for the trash collection, you notify the city and we.
And then our code enforcement officer.
And that, that's a doable process.
Uh, because you got two entities here, that we're, we're not in charge of.
But we have to get the cooperation of the district to provide us with, you know, a current list of water meters and that is going to be the issue of part-time people that have their water meter turned off when they're not here and.
I don't think, I don't wanna get involved with water.
What about people with a whale, though, that's.
We have no whales.
That, no whales, okay.
There's one.
Maybe one.
Answer, but anyway, I don't wanna get into, I, I've listened to too many arguments and gripes about how high the water bill is and I don't add anything else to the water bill.
No, I don't think we can put it on the water bill, because the city doesn't, the city doesn't have the water department here, but.
But y'all will, like I said, she says that someone didn't pay, y'all will have somebody to.
Right.
Well, if.
We will have a code enforcement officer.
Okay, that's why I didn't have.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as we get this ordinance passed, this ordinance, um, authorizes me to hire a code enforcement officer.
That was my thought, 'cause, you know, if you say we got exclusive and we send them on the bill and they don't pay it, well, what are we gonna do?
If you have someone that, that I could work with, uh, like, right now, we send Berryville, Green Forest and Eureka around the twentieth of each month, what's called a number flow sheet, so that they can put it on the bills, okay, I'm not saying for you to put it on your bills by no means, we would still bill them, but, we would send you an Excel sheet of the ones that we show have not paid in more than two months. Because our standard is, yes, you know, everybody frees their bill, you've got till the twentieth of the next before I suspend it. And then the thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty-eighth, or whatever, if it's still not paid, then I close you. At that time is when we could, you know, put those customers, and then I would just send you this spreadsheet.
Most people don't go back, 'cause there's reactivation and all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, at that time, it's about two months.
Yeah, my understanding is that you will actually send out the bill, well, I, you know, I have debit, which is.
I'm, I'm, on the auto drafts, the past couple of months, no, the month before, I sent everybody a bill or a segment, and.
Really, you didn't get it?
I didn't either.
Okay, yeah, there was like, well, over three thousand.
That's, anyway.
But anyway, yes, we can mail out segments.
I, 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 I haven't, but this is a good solution to the building problem.
One more question, uh, the, uh, Mayor McCann from Berryville spoke to Rotary a few weeks ago and talked about, uh, their deal of having sell tags and get, I don't know, two bags or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
As part of your service and you buy additional.
Mm-hmm.
And how do you handle that now?
Uh, well, it, mostly for elderly that really don't put out, maybe.
No, you're talking about extra bags.
Extra bags.
Oh, the extra bags, I'm sorry, yes, the City of Berryville and City of Green Forest, um, you go to their water department and purchase a bag tag, and they sell it to you, and then, uh, we get a portion of that.
So, it's not a bag, it's a bag tag?
It's a bag tag, yes.
But see, but see, they, like I said, everyone's different contracts, they set up their contract, the City of Berryville set up theirs, one bag per household. So, they sell a lot of that, I mean, it depends on what you want, if you wanna go with the services we got, which is the easiest thing in the world to do.
But it depends on.
Pick up their trash, I mean, it.
Cause now, it's whatever I'm getting that ninety gallon barrel.
Yes, yes.
Cause that's, cause that's the service you picked.
That's right.
And that.
But, but, there have been times that I thought that if, if I had excess bags that I put on top, that I'd be charged for that?
Yes, most generally, sometimes drivers, you know, especially if you didn't have it up a week before.
Our drivers, if we got the same driver on the map, and he knows.
No, I, I, I expect the pain, so I, I'm just making sure that's how that worked.
Berryville has.
My wife generates a lot.
Green Forest has two-bag service.
My wife says she's.
And, but, I mean, the best thing to do is not y'all, not require a certain kind of service, just require a service, right?
Yes.
You know, cause all, I mean, every contract's different in every city.
Every family is different.
I think this exclusive service is the only thing that's gonna work, and, and, you know, it, it, there's gonna be problems, but I just think.
Okay, people, y'all gonna have a full, within the next time, I mean, it.
Uh, I don't, you know, the only thing that, you know, that, uh, do we anticipate have, you know, having these folks have some kind of a hearing or, or.
Like a public, public forum or something?
To let them present, you know, when we get to that point where we're, uh, that they would come back and talk.
We can show up at a council, whatever y'all want, I mean, we're.
Uh, yeah, cause there's gonna be.
I, well, you say that, but, you know, this was a publicly announced meeting. Everybody knew that trash collection was gonna be on the agenda.
I hope I'm wrong, but I, all I know is I, I went through it fifteen years ago in, in Orlando, B O C, and there was a lot of.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna say there won't be any grumbling, if, if we decide to do it, but, um.
But I, I, I'm afraid of the grumbling, because I think it need, it's, it needs to happen.
We did this in Green Forest twenty years ago or something, and, and we thought it was, I don't know how long ago it was, but it was gonna be, everybody thought it was gonna be a nightmare, all, you know, around that everybody's happened, it was so smooth, when we started picking it up, it worked.
Most of the people who's the grumbling now aren't here anymore, so.
And they don't show up here.
April, where do you get your address list from, to let you know who's not, or who is on your list?
The best way is from water meters, 'cause I can import those into my system.
Water meters or turned-on water?
Water meters, doesn't matter if it's turned on or not.
But, 'cause a lot of people have houses that are on, you know, just being sold or something.
I think that's, that's where we go.
Vacant houses.
Yeah, and, and that's the best way for my system to import it, is based on the water meter number.
Okay.
So, that's why it doesn't matter if it's turned on or not.
Okay.
So, what about my air, that, that, am I paying double for my irrigation?
No, no, because there is a difference.
Rocks.
However, uh, like Eureka Springs is where I first learned several, we, anyway, a long time ago, that a lot of people have a water line and then they have an irrigation line, but it's the numbering that she explained to me that determines whether it's a regular water line or the irrigation, so you could, they just tell us.
Cause you don't wanna do it on every baking, I mean, that'd be the best one, 'cause you don't wanna do every baking property, you know, you wanna do it with residents or.
Yeah, the, the, uh, that's why I say I have to talk to the district, I haven't talked to them yet about being involved in this, but, they will have to provide us with a list of water meter customers, and they're gonna, there's gonna have to be a process by which that gets maintained, because, you know, there's a lot of rental property in Holiday Island, so, the, uh, you know, the water meter will be in the renter's name, and, and, uh, so, if they move and somebody else moves in.
A lot of change over every month.
Tell you.
That's what I was gonna say, you know, this one exclusive, that we're the only ones here, that ain't gonna make us pick up their trash, I mean, I should make it where everyone's required to, you know.
But you'll let them know who to bill, you know, if, if somebody new moves in.
Well, you got new ho- new homes and everything.
So, you're prepared to make changes on the, the, the person's name at that address?
You know, like the cities now, they will email us once a month, you know, the, the person's name, the address, uh, their account number with the water company, and then moved out, moved in, that type of thing. That's, that's a format that we can fit and tailor to what you can do. That, that is the one good thing, I mean, we're big enough to where I can work with what you need. But we're not so big that I say, well, this is what I have, does that make sense?
Are you also under the same security situation that we have with our water system? That, uh, we cannot release the names?
No, we cannot release the names.
So, you are under that same security privacy aspect?
Any kind of company, yes, uh, whether we are or not.
That should relieve us of that concern that the district would have of releasing that data.
We don't release information about employees, I mean, if, if somebody calls, we do see this a lot, somebody calls, wants to give their trash guy a Christmas card, okay, we'll give them the name, that's it. I don't like putting on the route sheet, uh, vacation, you know, won't be back till, no, don't do that.
Yes.
Granted, it is our employees, but, you know, don't do that.
My, my house won't, there won't be anybody at my house.
Yeah, so.
If you wanna come.
We do.
Let's put it on Facebook.
That's why my, my wife won't post anything on Facebook when we're on vacation. Because that, that advertises to the world that there's nobody in your house.
In this day and time.
But I also have to look at the team, you know, in all the purposes. I have to answer for all of this. So I'd rather play on the same side.
There's a lot of detail to work out as far as contract and, you know, what kind of service we need and, and. How we're gonna manage the billing and all of that kinda stuff, so. Uh, you know, when we get to that point, we're gonna have to have another meeting to sit down and talk about, you know, what the contract would look like.
It's gotta happen. It's gotta happen.
Well, if you have any questions, feel free to call.
I mean, a lot of it is up to y'all, though, I mean, and we can, we can tell you what we wanna do, but I mean, it's really up to y'all.
Who are the other, I'm just, I'm sure you know, because they're supposed to be licensed, but you. Uh, who are the other carriers here?
More.
In Holiday Island, that area.
Osage might have some.
Osage is here.
Republic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Ex-dusters.
Ex-dusters, but he does mostly cleanups. Uh, he's not a weekly trash. Uh. I have a total of nine small haulers and license from the four.
But some of them don't come in.
But some of them.
Is that carrier gonna?
But you've got, you know, the mowar, the Osage, ex-dusters, Ace.
Ace and.
And then, uh.
Do y'all do like, uh, construction dumpster?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We do temporary small ones weekly, and then we do twenties and thirty roll-off ones, like what you see at construction.
So that would be a consideration as we do the contract to have that covered as well, I guess?
It's in.
It usually is, yeah, it usually is.
It's usually part of the. It was at one time.
But that's how you keep.
I don't work call se.
And, um, uh, I have one more question, but it's gone now.
I have a ninety gallon container on my curb each week, is there a smaller container?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
Well, you can go with the sixty-five gallon cart that we supply, or you can get your own cans and do the two bagged service, two can service.
Yeah, cause I was wondering, I and my wife, we recycle, so our garbage is typically, typically one thirteen gallon bag.
Exactly.
A week.
Yeah.
We don't need a fifty-five gallon container.
Provide garbage.
You could, in, in that suggestion, what I recommend when I talk to somebody, like, it calls me, do a bag tag. It's like a dollar sixty for each, you know, that you put on your bag.
It's a big thing.
And you say you get twenty, well, if that lasts you twenty weeks, okay? If that lasts you two years.
Is that for a thirty gallon bag?
That's for each, yeah, one bag.
That's for any bag.
For any bag, okay.
Well, each bag, but it would, it's best if you could put it in a thirty gallon, that way you get two weeks in one tag.
Well, I got fifty-five gallon garbage bags.
Well, honestly.
I do.
I do.
Honestly, we're not supposed to pick those up.
Okay, alright, so you limit it to a thirty gallon bag?
Uh, yeah, thirty-four.
Thirty, thirty-five, I think is what the.
Do a lot of people put yard waste?
We see that frequently in the fall, yes, but it's against state law, so.
Yard waste is against state law?
Yard waste cannot go to an Arkansas landfill.
They can reject our loads.
Now, you can burn yard waste, that's the only thing in Arkansas you can burn, uh, is yard waste or burn.
And maybe this comes up when we discuss this ordinance in more detail, but that's one of my main questions, is about what do we do about yard waste?
Yes.
You can burn. There is a facility in Eureka Springs that takes it.
Well, burning is dangerous too.
Yes.
So Arkansas says we can dump yard waste, but Arkansas doesn't allow yard waste dumps?
They are, yes, they are.
You don't have a place where we can take tree limbs and leaves?
We don't, we're solid waste, we don't do yard waste.
Does anybody in Carroll County?
Is any very concerned?
The City of Eureka Springs takes it on Wednesday.
But I don't know what they do for a city, but.
At the recycle center there?
No, well, it's.
Behind it, it's, it's the same driveway, but it's behind it, and they mulch it up, is what they do.
Yeah, I think we just.
I'm worried about having to think.
I am too.
I've been going there for years, and I called Eureka and that was fine.
Holes like number five.
I was there one day when somebody.
You take it in a plastic bag?
No.
Look at that, a forest fire in there one time, hit the flag.
I have a trailer, light limbs or leaves and stuff, I. Put in, I, uh, put in a trash can and dump, but there's a lot of people bring it in plastic bags and dump the plastic bags.
They have a compost facility is what they got there?
Yes.
You have to take the plastic bags with you, but yeah, you could haul it there.
They compost it then, and tree limbs and stuff, they chip and compost.
But then you can also get on their list when they go to disperse the compost. But any of those questions or anything like that, if you're talking about at public waters.
You know, we could probably, in time, we could probably work something out with the district to use the depot up there, you know, that, the big vacant lot. That's where they take.
Well, that's what I always thought, and not, you know, I've always been interested in that.
The problem we're gonna have is that that's. Uh, Kenny already has a problem with people beating the gate down and dumping refrigerators and stuff back in there, so.
But if you control it in some way, it might be possible.
Again, you know, you, you start out doing something, you know, that ninety-nine percent of the people are going to appreciate and not abuse, and then you'll have one or two.
I mean, you got so many people out here, they're like me, for instance, and some of you, that, uh, you don't have a truck. You know, if you don't want to burn, cause you don't really have any suitable place to burn it, or you're, you're frightened of it, like me.
Or we do anything. The thing that's really worrying so.
You wouldn't want me to set a fire.
Is if you go across from my house or behind his house, I'm not so sure we're not creating an hazard in the woods.
Oh, absolutely.
Piles of leaves.
That's.
Yeah.
And trash that high.
I know, I know.
And it's in part because we have few options of.
We don't have any options for disposal of yard waste, and we have a huge amount of yard waste to deal with.
Somebody was doing that a week or so ago, there was.
Yeah, they do that now.
Pulling a big, a big tarp, uh, dragging a big tarp across Holiday Island Drive full of leaves heading towards the vacant lot to dump all their.
Oh, exactly. Hey, how many, how many leaves does it?
Sunday, we were sat and watched the neighbor carry his bags full of leaves, dum, 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 in the car park.
I've seen them off of five, especially a lot.
It's because we have no options.
Yeah.
We have no options.
Well, apparently we do, we can have someone haul it to Eureka Springs to the, uh, yard waste site.
Well, that's.
That's the option we have.
If, yeah, you can find, you can find the person to haul it.
Right.
Right, let's, uh, let's put out the yard waste here, because they don't do yard waste.
Thank you.
Um, might wanna consider getting into it, sounds like.
Get into the yard waste business, you'd make a fortune.
For the purple, I can tell. Don't call me, I'll call you.
Anyway.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Is Carroll County Solid Waste a profitable operation? Are you gonna be here in twenty years?
Uh, yes.
We've been here since ninety-three.
But how do you know you'll be here in twenty years?
Nobody will be there.
Let me answer the question, please.
We have established foundation.
Okay.
And outside of a major disaster with our board, uh, chairman, the mayor's, the county judge, I don't see us going anywhere.
Trash is going nowhere.
Well, that's my concern.
Trash is always.
We, we have very secure jobs.
We have a.
Y'all, everybody produces trash.
I understand that, but my concern is what legislators above us in the state and the federal levels might do to someone like Carroll County Solid Waste. Because you're small compared to the big guys.
But we, we are a dist.
We do, because we are a district, they're, and they are part of this regional, or not regional, the districts, the directors of all the districts of Arkansas. And they're even work, they even work yearly on legislation. And having a spokesperson be involved in that state legislation.
Okay.
We have, uh, what are we?
That's what I started saying, that, that.
What's our guys called that go to the senate?
I can't think of the word.
Lobbyist.
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 We actually, we actually.
We have lobbyists working for us.
I'm, I'm, I believe that the district was formed by order of the county judge, right?
No.
No.
It wasn't?
No.
I thought the county judge had to initiate that, just like.
Phil Jackson has been looking for us to become a district for a long time.
Phil and Mayor.
We're about it.
Phil and Mayor Kim, yeah, the district only became the, uh, didn't, I mean, I really, you know, Sam Barr, I don't know.
Well, it, it was, it was, uh, the whole board agreed it, but Mayor Kim and Phil worked closely because Phil. Knew a lot of the senate and, you know, knew a lot of the political about, uh, and it finally passed two thousand nineteen. But we had to get the approval of, uh, AG Hugh.
We had to go down to, uh, cause it was, uh, land, land and resource.
But the point is, but the point I'm getting at, the district will never go away.
No.
No, that's.
We are the ninth district now in Arkansas, and even if Carroll County Solid Waste goes away, the district will never go away.
Are you, are you considered a governmental body under the control of the state?
Yes.
Yes. Nonprofit, nonprofit governmental, we were actually created by Act seven of three.
And we've got a good standing company, uh, nobody owns the company, a good standing company with a good standing, uh, board members. Uh, that oversee the company. Uh, I just, I just don't see Carroll County.
So I think it's a district, it's a state district instead of a county.
Nobody's gonna come in and buy Carroll County Solid Waste.
Yeah, yes, it's a state.
We're under, we're under.
It's a district under the state, not the county.
Yes.
I bet the original authority, though, the, the Solid Waste Authority, I bet was actually found or established by order of the county judge.
Might have been.
Yes, the authority was, yes.
Well, we were created by a statute.
The move up to being a district was done by the board, but.
Yeah, the authority or whatever it was, Ben, you said. But I think, you know.
Since ninety-three.
Hey, I knew it was. Lynn's question, are we gonna, are we gonna quit or, or move out or dissolve Carroll County Solid Waste? No.
Uh. Okay, I'm sorry, it was Act six ninety-nine of nineteen seventy-nine. And Act nine nineteen of nineteen seventy-nine. Became a status of public body and body corporate and political pursuant to Act six ninety-nine of nineteen seventy-nine.
And we take being.
So we were made.
We take being a district very seriously, uh. Carroll County is really, and, and we do got some customers in Missouri, you know, along eighty-six and, and along County Road here, Tangle Line Road. But, and we're just as serious about taking care of those customers, but we.
I get that today.
We are very concerned about taking care of the needs of Carroll County.
Well.
People and towns. And, uh, not to make it perfect, we're a nonprofit.
We're here to provide some jobs, pay our employees and buy equipment.
And buy equipment and, and do the best service that.
Kind of dividend do you pay?
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, call us back anytime, uh, Dan, call me anytime you have any questions.
Yep.
Well, I hope we don't have to have a forum, cause I think it'd be.
We've been to Eureka forums, we've been to.
Y'all make the rules, we'll fill the contract and.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I just remembered, hung around too long, I just remembered what my other contract, or my other question was. Uh, do, uh, do any other of the other cities, does Green Forest, Berryville, or, or Eureka Springs, do any of those have multiple carriers? Or are they all exclusively?
They are all exclusive with us, an exclusive contract. Matter of fact, we run a lot of them out of those towns a lot of times, you know, call, ones that don't know, uh, you know. Uh, waste management knows, but they may be somebody's sick, somebody else in the office that day, somebody had called from Berryville and ordered a container. Uh, a thirty yard container, and they set one, and then we'll have to have them remove it, but we are, we are the only exclusive haulers, and that's the way the contract is wrote out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, the first Saturday, are you gonna call me on that, Dan, the first Saturday in May, or is that pretty much a goal you feel?
I, I don't know that we have, uh, they didn't have a dog in the fight.
They don't, they don't, George, cause they're just county customers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you said that. So.
I would set it up through the district.
I think that the, the district usually made some sort of announcement about it, but, um.
We ma, we mailed out letters.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't need any approval from us or anything?
If you put your stuff out the day before, half of them will be gone, I mean.
Yeah. Which helps us, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Maybe I have to get rid of that busted up, uh.
Yeah.
Computer cap that's in the office.
It's got to be function.
I should have made that a condition if you guys. No, you don't have to stick it on, I think, I think you bring it out, thank y'all. Let you go down the road.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I thought they used mowar.
One thing about your business, it's always picking up.
Thank y'all.
They're gonna take a five minute break before we.
We can.
I always did.
We'll, uh, recess for five minutes?
The water's gone.
I'm gonna go into the.
We'll have to tell them to reset it then.
I'm so.
Recording stopped.
I gotta remember next time we have a nine o'clock meeting to limit myself to three cups of coffee.
Dan, do you know who the district uses for waste management? I don't think they use Carroll County Solid Waste. That would be an outlay now, they have changed.
There is one issue, and that's that, um, the district uses Ozark, I think, to haul their, their, um. Waste treatment plant.
Okay, well, that's separate stuff, that's.
Grudge.
Yeah.
You know, to, uh, to tiny town, um, and I have talked to these guys about it, I show them that they.
Leap burning.
Do that kind of thing.
Probably not, but that's, that's something to talk about as far as commercial.
No, but if, if Ozark can't.
Than this.
I mean, if we're gonna shut out here for anything else, they may not be interested in the, uh, doing that anymore. And, uh, that would leave the district in alert as far as finding somebody to haul it.
Where else would y'all join?
Sure.
Well, I think.
I haven't made a start. They called them, they all that in.
Scratch that, it's gonna be.
Um, it's, it's.
Oh, it's a one sided tanker of some kind.
It, well, it's dry, because, uh, they, they, we have a big drying bed, and they dry everything that goes into. That, that's, oh, it's just a big.
Hundred fifty yards.
Lot, a lot.
Three houses down.
With a lid that's powerful for it, and I, I follow it to. About four walls and a hundred and fifty.
The golf course isn't that big.
I'm sure it's more than that.
But that's, uh, I don't know what she meant.
But that is something that I need to.
Next button.
But, but they've got trash coming out of this building, who picks it up?
My little house.
I didn't think it's Carroll County.
That's gonna be the next big, but, but all issues. That's what I was.
No. No, there is a line item, but in our discussion, there was a spreadsheet where we approved the thirty dollars a month for. And I didn't know how it rolled into what budget. But you've got it listed separately, it was sacred, so it looks like.
I set up an account, I set up an expense account for it, but in the budget, all there is, I think, is a thousand dollars for other.
Yeah, I was gonna try to find my national spreadsheet, send you where I think it's in our budget.
Okay.
Cause we're, we're gonna have the same thing here pretty quick for a Zoom account, a monthly charge for Zoom.
There's a dog.
And we're doing it for meetings purposes, not for building and construction, but for general math, but we'll use Zoom for all of our meetings, whether it's commissioner, city council, but we'll be doing that today, creating a Zoom account for the city. Linda's been using her private personal. But there is some spreadsheet where, we talked about it in a meeting, I pretty spent that thirty dollars a month for Data Scout. I still don't know. But in a supporting budget, it was in the, um, um, the ordinance, there's no space, you know, you can see it written there. But Wes listed it separately, so it looks like there's no budget for it.
Oh, here. Okay, I see. Here it is, it's in this one.
There you go.
But it's under, it's under.
Under IT.
It's under administration. So, and I put it under, under building and construction.
She's ignoring us.
That's typical, isn't it? So.
So that we want, if we want a movement to.
The other one didn't charge enough, so you're doing okay.
Which ear do I?
That's why I'm screening it here.
But it's administration for the whole city, you know, in, in the grand scheme.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that it'll be used exclusively for buildings and construction.
Okay.
Finding and zoning, because, you know, I use Data Scout all the time just to figure out where.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we get started now?
Oh, hang on, I'm gonna start the recording.
Dinner at five tonight.
I'm gonna start the recording back up if everyone's ready. Uh, well, we got two leaving right now, so.
Two just left, call them in.
We'll wait till they get back.
Welcome to working with old guys.
Old women aren't much better, just saying.
They're not, no.
I thought, I thought we had, but, uh, herding cats.
I'm gonna make me a note that next time we have a nine o'clock meeting, three cups of coffee in the morning, not five.
All right, what I need to do is plan the rest of the meeting now, because I'm gonna get something done.
Are we gonna go through the sanitation part of the ordinance and look at it?
Yeah, I think that's all we'll be able to do. I think all we're gonna try and do is just.
Well, we also had the other chapters of five to look at.
Well, I, I was hoping that everybody would come with questions or comments, so I could say.
I heard a lot of questions being asked.
Right.
To not move on, I didn't want, I, I wouldn't plan to read the whole thing.
Well, that's fine.
Cover the cover.
That's fine.
We've read it.
I got my questions annotated.
Okay.
I had a whole bunch of questions.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the recording back on.
Right.
Hang on, I'll let you know here.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
All right, we're back out of recess, we're going to, uh, we're, the, the way we'll, you know, um, approach the rest of the morning here, and I do plan on being done in an hour, um, or we're gonna cut it off in an hour. I'm gonna go through all of these, uh, sections of the code and just ask if anybody has any questions or comments. I'm not gonna read the entire thing.
We're just going through sanitation, five oh four.
No, well, we'll start out there, but then we're gonna go into five oh eight.
Okay. I got a lot of.
Just make sure we get through five oh four.
Yeah, five oh eight's gonna be a real issue.
Okay, five oh four oh one, any questions on that paragraph?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
When, uh, we have title regulations, usually Title five point oh one would be a title paragraph. There's a, usually a section that titles what the whole thing is about, so my question is, are there missing sections five oh one through five oh three that we need to have added in here?
Uh, it, it, um, starts under chapters.
Okay.
On this page, the chapters start with, uh, five oh four sanitation.
Okay.
So, um, again, I'm honorably adopting this from another city.
Okay.
So, uh, they obviously just reserved five oh one to five oh three.
Okay, all right.
So, five oh one, oh, uh, five oh four oh one created, any questions there?
Nope.
No. Oh, two?
Uh, what, just the terminology, why are we using garbage? Garbage doesn't, you know, and all the things, isn't trash a better name for that?
Trash is defined differently, I think.
Yes, it is.
Mm-hmm. Well, garbage is not shrubbery and furniture and machinery.
But what, it is, yeah, it is, the way it is in here.
Garbage to me is foodstuffs, anyway.
Trash is defined as any item worth little or nothing, such as things that are no longer useful or wanted, and that have been thrown away, also known as chaff, deadwood, debris, direct, dross, dust, junk, litter, offal, off scoring, raffle, refuse, riffraff, rubbish, scrap, spill, or waste. That's different than.
It makes a lot of difference.
Is that in here?
No, that's what I think we need to add.
Oh, okay.
Definition for trash, and then put trash in a couple of other places.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Anyway.
But you're saying add a definition, add the definition of trash.
Yeah, and then there'll be, there'll be, there'll be places where we insert the word trash, 'cause it says garbage, but we probably wanna say and trash and that kind of thing.
Garbage is like virtually everything you could think of.
Garbage is defined as, uh, stuff that comes from waste of, of, uh, food.
Organic waste.
Yes, organic waste.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, this doesn't do that.
Well, it includes cans and jars, though.
Says garbage is animal or vegetable waste resulting from the handling, preparation, cooking, and consumption of food.
This, this, this means trash.
Right, so that's why we need to add trash as a definition, and then put trash in the appropriate spots.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, well, does that address the issue that I see? Doesn't this say that garbage includes grass leaves, shrubbery, and small trees, which they cannot take?
That doesn't mean you're excluded from the definition.
Okay.
Yeah, just because it's, just because it's a form of garbage doesn't necessarily mean that the contract that we have with Carroll County would include picking that up.
Okay, if it didn't say, unless the contract says they'll pick up garbage, and if that means.
Did you pick this up from one of our local Carroll County cities or a different city?
I think I started with Conway's.
Okay, 'cause maybe they do pick up yard waste in Conway.
Yeah, well, he, I don't know. Lot, lot larger cities do.
Where I came from did. Had to be a separate container, but it was, they could.
We wanna, you wanna scratch the part about grass leaves, shrubbery, and small trees?
Yeah, I think Wes's point is that it needs to be consistent with the contract that we're anticipating.
Well, now this, the only pens that work here are the ones that Lynn buys.
Cheap ones work, okay.
All these freebies, maybe the key is, if you buy the pen, it'll work, if it's a freebie, it won't.
Oh, these are all free, that says holiday in, this one says quality in.
Anything else that needs to be scratched?
No.
Do what?
Well, we may wanna revisit the paragraph once we get the contract, to see how it fits.
All right, business, commercial, residential fees, that'll have to be negotiated, payment of fees, any questions?
No.
Disposition of funds, it just says the money goes into the normal fund, uh, containers, no, that just basically says it'll be negotiated.
Yeah.
Burning or dumping, it's totally unlawful to burn or dump.
My, I had a question there, do we need to qualify what can be burned? Somewhere, at least.
Well, it says.
And is that under the burn ordinance?
Garbage.
It says unlawful to burn, period.
Well, I'm, yeah, my question was more the opposite of, of where are we gonna put what can be burned? Is that under another, the burning five oh eight, is that there?
Maybe.
Does that, well, we got a whole section.
Yeah, we have a whole section here.
Does that throw any garbage or trash, do we need to under trash?
Well, I guess that came to mind because the first sentence of five oh eight says, "No person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste material in any manner whatsoever."
Yes.
So.
And that.
That matches five oh four oh nine.
Yeah. Five, five oh four oh nine basically reaffirms state law. State law says you can't burn garbage, period.
Okay.
Okay, so now, question, if we go back to where, if we eliminate grass, trees, shrubbery, and small trees from five oh four oh two, does that mean that you can burn?
No, we're gonna deal with that in.
Yeah, it's just, it, it'll be in a different section.
Okay.
If we allow burning of yard waste, it'll be in a different section.
Okay. So this will just apply to garbage?
And trash, it says, in five oh four oh nine.
Oh, and trash.
Trash or garbage.
Okay.
And since we refer to trash and garbage, it confirms that we need to add a definition to trash.
But trash and garbage are things that can be picked up by the hauler?
Yes.
All right, funds.
I thought the spines were awfully small.
I did, too.
I think they're too small.
Well, except they're kinda daily, they kinda, every occurrence is a day or something.
Yeah, that's, that's where they get you.
I am. Yeah, daily, you can end up quickly.
And, and I'll, I'd have to go back and reread, uh, sixteen ten three oh five, the state law may limit what you can, how much of a fine you can impose.
It says.
Well, actually, this one is not a daily one, apparently, but it, it escalates the second, third, fourth, fifth occurrence.
Yeah.
I see, anyway, we'll see.
And by the way, you know, once we get this hammered out to the point that we like it, we're gonna have to run it by Justin anyway, because of the fact that there are fines and penalties involved. All right, uh, section twelve, inspectors.
Did we pass five oh four oh two definition already?
Go back.
Um, the only reason I ask, because it doesn't have the word trash in that paragraph at all.
You, you already brought that up, I made a note to add a definition of that.
Okay.
All right, um, now we're up to penal, or to inspectors. This authorizes the, uh, code enforcement officer.
Sounds good.
Thirteen penalty.
In our discussion on zoning, uh, when we talked about penalties, we added some text to, uh, say the city can recover its prosecution costs. Is this the place where we would put that? This only talks about a fine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can raise that question, I, I don't know how we would go, you know, that.
That's if it goes to district.
That, that basically, I think, I think from a legal perspective, they would say that that's what the fine does. That, you know, the city is not supposed to make money off of fines.
We don't make money recovering costs, yeah. Now, if the cost is five thousand dollars to prosecute the case, shouldn't we be able to recover that if we win?
Yeah.
So, my point, or my question is, do we have to have it in here to say we want to recover those costs? Cause my concern is if it doesn't say that we want to recover, the judge can say you don't get your costs.
I'll ask Justin the question, can we try to recover the cost of prosecution?
Thank you. And is this also the same place that we would, uh, put a paragraph to talk about if we have to clean it up?
Um, that is further down.
Okay.
Enforcement, let's see. This just basically says that, that, um, the county can also enforce county and state regulations. Authority to contract for service, that just means that if, if the city's got something to clean up that Carroll County couldn't or wouldn't do, then we're authorized to hire somebody else to do it. Bulky items, this gets to the, uh, to the pickup thing, and this'll be basically negotiated as part of the contract, too. So that may change after we get the contract hammered out.
Bulky item thing, all that, it don't really depend on the contract, I think.
Five oh four nineteen, limits on yard waste, there, I, I reserve that, right now, it's nothing. Five oh four twenty, white goods, electronic waste, and also that, that'll be part of the negotiation. Charges at the landfill, I don't think we would even get into that, but if we ever do in the future, um, there'd be a section there for.
That's fifteen?
Yeah.
Or about twenty-two.
About twenty-two.
Twenty-two, oh. What, where was the yard waste, did you say? Which section was that?
I, it was just reserved, because yard waste is not, they don't, they don't pick up yard waste, so, um, but it's there in case someday in the future we want to.
That was nineteen.
Provide for that.
Ah, oh, I see, here it is, okay.
Uh, data, data, towards to the landfill. This basically says that the hauler has to make sure you're not, um, just, you know, spreading our trash all, all over the county. And then I made a note for myself, uh, five oh four twenty-four about recycling, that I think we need to add a paragraph in here about, um, I don't think we can make recycling mandatory necessarily, but we can put something in here about.
Well, the service being.
They will provide recycling service.
Yeah. It's not, man, it, it's not an issue other than the fact that I think we should note in here, something about recycling.
We did say that Harley-Ham does a pretty good job in the winter.
Well, I mean, I mean, the contract has, will have to include that we do, you know, trash and provide for recycling, and they do.
Offer the.
I don't, I'm not sure that some of the other ones do.
I've seen, I mean, this, this paragraph will probably say something to the effect that Holiday Island, the city of Holiday Island encourages recycling, or something that similar, but.
The contract has to provide the recycling.
But, um, but it would, it would support doing things like having the, you know, the cardboard dumpsters across the street and stuff like that. Would you have the way they provide as a free service to Holiday Island, Carroll County does?
So, where do we go from here? We, we can't really do much with this until we hammer out what the contract's gonna look like, given.
Um, uh, I'll probably sit down and, and, you know, I gave a copy of this to George, and he'll probably, and, you know, he and I can talk about it. I'm kinda thinking, because we wanna get this going fast.
Right, and I don't think, you know, in some places, this is trying to mirror what the, the contract is, and the contract that should, I mean, this should just talk about the general, what, so, I, I, I mean, sometimes I think it's more specific than it's gonna be, um.
I think a lot of us are more, kind of interested in the details, but it shouldn't be in the ordinance, yeah.
Well, other than the fact that there's gonna have to be future contracts negotiated, and maybe that contract won't be with Carroll County Solid Waste, so you don't want your, you know, you don't want their contract being the regulation.
Right, and that's all, that was the point I was trying to make.
Yeah. But what I, what I was gonna suggest is that we have, that, that, we get the ordinance as close as we can to being what we want. Uh, subject to modification, because this will have to do, we'll have to do three readings on this as well.
Right.
So, if, if we have to make some modifications to it, you know, as long as we get. So if, if we have to make some modifications to it, you know, as long as we get it done before the third reading, you know, we'd, we'd be fine.
Can we have a first reading next month, week then?
That's what I'm planning on.
Okay.
All right, I'll talk more.
I, I agree, we need, I thought we talked about.
Just the section of the five, kind of five.
We can't do, we can't do that.
Just the sanitation section?
I would intend to do this whole thing.
Okay, well.
Next week.
We're, we're gonna be working.
Let's see how we get to.
Or as much of this as we think we can do.
I agree.
All right, so if there's nothing more on, uh, section five oh four, then we can move on to five oh eight, maintenance of real property. Again, I'm not gonna read this, does anybody have?
I had a little problems with, it says no per. Except as provided in section five oh eight ten. Well, we got a.
I've got a ton of questions.
I think, yeah, we both got a ton of questions.
In five oh eight dot oh seven penalty, I have the same question, Dan, under bullet number one.
Already, the, the copy you guys had, my last copy that I sent out, should've had in red all of your suggestions.
Oh, okay, right.
And, uh, and I put in there under five oh eight oh seven one, A one, court costs and cost of prosecution.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions, comments on?
Well, that, this thing, without all burn barrels, right? No.
No.
Doesn't have all.
It's been so.
I don't know what.
Incinerator.
I, I don't know what it's the.
Whatever the fire, the way it's read, it reads, is that.
Only incinerators conforming to Arkansas Air Pollution Control Code. I have no idea what that is.
Then you can't have one if you don't know. If you wanna burn, you need an incinerator that meets that code.
Somewhere in there it says you have to have a, a permit from the, approved by the fire chief, by their truck.
That's down below, yes.
Way down.
Yeah, you gotta get approval from the fire chief to light it, but you have to have the right container to light.
Um, I'm just wondering what, you know, what, what does that look like?
It's the size of a, typically it's the size of a half of a container, and it's got a specific chimney on it, and it's got a collector for debris, so the smoke comes out of the clean.
What's a half a container?
Uh, it's not a full truckload, but a half truckload sized box. Out of thirty yards, whatever they call that sized container. It's a big chunk of metal.
It's huge thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My, my problem with this is that B says burning will be allowed by individuals and businesses with some restrictions. But A says no person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste in any manner whatsoever.
Except.
They're totally contradictory.
I see what you're saying.
Except as provided under five oh eight ten, yeah?
So is, then B should be under five oh eight ten?
That's good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, you're right.
It's confusing if it's not.
I have a little problem with that, you know. Yeah, I think you're right, it needs to be, as an exception. So you just wanna make the one statement.
Yeah.
And then the exceptions all go with the exceptions, that makes the kinds of sense. Um, when you get.
It's on the next page?
No, I'm scrolling through, I don't see it.
Yes. Oh, it's on two pages down, sorry.
Well, how about if I say, um, within the, uh, that, that no person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste material in any manner whatsoever within the city limits, except as provided in this code.
Five eight ten.
Well, doesn't that be five oh eight ten?
Well, that's where all the exceptions are.
That's where all the exceptions are.
Wouldn't that make it flow a little easier? Yeah. Just put all the exceptions in one section. I think the, B makes no sense whatsoever.
Well, it makes sense.
Well, it makes sense.
It makes sense right there.
I think it just needs to be.
You could make it one of the bullet points under five ten, I mean, five oh eight ten.
That is, I agree.
Maybe just make it letter K.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, got that?
Okay.
All right. Ready to move on to oh seven?
Yeah. What, seven? Yeah, penalties, penalties.
No penalties?
No, maybe.
They added the, under, uh, item one, uh, court costs, or court costs and cost of prosecution with a question mark.
I don't have any problems with that, I already.
All right, move on to oh eight, littering declared illegal?
Yeah. That's good.
Should there be a cost for the court costs and cost of prosecution, uh, question mark?
Number? Did you issue the citation for it?
Unless they throw it out the fire window, then it's, then you can do that.
In five oh eight dot oh eight, the concern I have is that, um, oh, I, I, my notice, it's interesting, if, if a company's property owner, the employee, being a tenant, is involved in an accident like littering for a property owner while performing work renting, the company is sued along with the employee. So is somehow just the property owner only gonna be the ones declared illegal and, and fined? Or is the property owner somehow gonna be involved in this for the renter's situation? Do we hold the owner of the property responsible for what the renter's doing, is the question?
D says you can't.
That's why, that's my question, why?
I don't know how you're gonna enforce it.
Well, if I own a piece of property and the tree on my property falls on a neighbor's house, the property owner is responsible for it, not the renter.
That's not littering.
I know, I'm just asking the question, should the property owner be tied to the littering problem?
Well, you know, here's a consideration.
I don't.
It's real hard to get rid of the renter if they're not doing stuff the right way. I mean, you can't hardly kick a renter out.
Okay.
So what do you do? I mean.
You go after the property owner?
You go, no, the property owner has so little, uh, ability to kick out a renter, seriously, in Arkansas.
It takes a while. It takes a while.
It takes forever. And, and so you can't, I don't think you can hold the property owner.
It's not this Arkansas. I don't see how you.
You have to go after the renter.
Well, it's, and, you know, in the theory assumes, you go after the deepest pockets to get your things accomplished, and the pocket owner is the guy who owns the property. And if you can't go after him, you put a lien on his property.
But if his hands are tied, how are, why are you holding him responsible? He can't get rid of his, he can't force his renter out of the property.
Uh, technically, I don't think it's litter if it's on, you know, if I'm renting a house and I throw trash in the front yard, as long as it stays in the front yard, it's not litter. It's only litter when it blows into the neighbor's yard.
Well, it, C says if it remains on the property, it's not litter.
Right, so I don't know, I'm not sure how you would pull the property owner.
But it says, uh, it's, it's, if the litter remains on the property and the act does not create a public health or safety hazard, a public nuisance, or a fire hazard, which it could, it's on the property.
Hey, no, I think, I don't think you'd do much with litter.
Well, so Lynn, your, your issue is, you don't like, you don't like statement D, that the property, where we say the property owner shall not be held responsible.
Right.
I just know people who have rented out their property to what appeared to be decent citizens, and they trashed it, totally trashed it, and they couldn't.
We just talked down there on earlier, so that property owner.
There's a difference between dumping and littering, I think.
Well, that, that, that situation, Dogwood probably started as littering. You know, you can't.
I'm, I'm guessing that, I'm, I'm guessing that there's a whole can of worms relative to.
Littering.
Owners' responsibilities for the actions of their tenants. You know, because if, so, if, 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 if we can hold the property owner responsible for the person littering, you know, what if the person robs a bank? Is that, you know, can we hold the property owner responsible for, for them robbing the bank? Or, you know, what are the limits on?
Well, the.
Personal responsibility.
What I tied it to was, uh, a company and employee have an auto accident. The companies are sued as long as, as well as the employee driving the car. It's always happens.
Yeah.
Even though the guy was just gonna go get lunch for the box, he can, the company could be sued for that accident. So why isn't the property owner also responsible for its renter, for its actions in this case? And I understand there's probably a can of worms, but that's why I asked the question, why is?
We're talking criminal versus civil too. Civilly, they could be.
Okay.
But criminally, do we want, I mean, that's what we're dealing with. That's a little different. Criminally, you're not generally found vicariously liable for the act of a servant. Civilly, you are. So I, 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 I understand your point, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. We're talking.
You know, there is a, you know, a, an argument on the other side of that. You know, if, if a tenant creates a, um, superfund site on their, on that property, and the city has to go in and clean it up, um, we can put a lien against the property to cover the cost of doing that. So in this particular case, we would be holding the property owner financially responsible for the actions of their tenant.
But if we have to take the tenant to find him or her, the property owner wouldn't be accountable for that.
Boy, maybe C covers me. The person is the owner or tenant in lawful possession of property, and the litter remains upon the property. Maybe C involves the property owner. But then D is contradictory to that.
Yes.
Okay, what happened?
The key word there is unlawful possession of the property, which I'm thinking that means resides there.
I don't know what we're gonna do with this.
It, you know, is occupying.
I don't think you can. You're making me think. And it hurts.
Well, I'm in the paragraph, paragraph one of oh eight says, it's unlawful to dispose of litter on any public or private property. So even if it's the owner's property, that's private property, so it's a legal to leave litter.
Well, what is litter? Yeah, that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, but you got the unless, that was the three exceptions, A, B, and C there.
I don't see what you're gonna do anything with. She wouldn't talk this up. I've read this before, didn't seem like it's an issue.
Never is, until you know.
And then when somebody else throws something in, I said it's not, it's not as simple as I thought it was.
Well, it's, it's a personal life experience, that's all.
Yeah.
You know, litter is not defined in our, in this text.
I mean, we, we just went through that other one where, you know, talked about all kinds of, you know, helping it. So this, I don't know, this is.
I don't know, it's like D is a kind of.
I, I don't know why we're getting, why are we differentiating?
I think that D is intended to, to differentiate between if the owner is the one living on the property and creating the, and creating the litter, or the tenant is, you can't sue both, or you can't, you can't go after both. If it's a tenant, then the tenant's responsible. If it's, if the owner lives there, then the owner's responsible.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
That's the way I read it.
Okay. Greatest in answer.
All right, exceptions.
I, I have a question on, uh, F down there. It says a hundred and fifty yards from any home. Well, that's, we, we got any problems before we get to there.
It's worth A.
A hundred and fifty yards, I assume.
Feet, yards, what's the difference?
Well, I assume that you didn't mean.
Football fields?
It's like.
I wrote that here, thank you.
I did too.
Yeah, everybody did, a hundred yards, that's my whole neighborhood.
It's like.
Awesome.
It's bigger than any lot we have out here.
To me, it's just like golf. I'm trying to hit the ball a hundred yards and I hit it a hundred feet.
Yeah, I believe that one completely low. Uh, I'm not even sure a hundred fifty feet is doing, but let's.
All right, so let's start at the beginning here, five oh eight, uh, ten, the initial paragraph. Uh, Lynn raised a question that the recently adopted building code, uh, might conflict with that.
Section S on trash burning, I quoted it there. Did you get a copy of that?
Prior to lighting, in the building code, we said, uh, prior to lighting, any fire shall be the responsibility owner and or builder to notify the office of the Holiday Island Fire Department, blah, blah, blah. So this is for burning stumps and stuff when you, when you're tearing a lot.
Right.
It sets such items that may be approved for time, that's pretty loosely worded.
Allowed to burn brush and scrap lumber.
That gives people no guidance whatsoever.
Gives the fire department authority, not us.
Yeah.
We adopted that language.
I'm not sure I understand the first paragraph, but we, we're making some exceptions for land developers, builders, but not a homeowner? That's the way it's reading. That's what, I mean, that's the issue, I think, of what are we gonna do with homeowners? She brought it up before. That's what, that if you go back to. We're giving limited options to a homeowner to deal with.
Why aren't they off, supposed to haul off their scrap lumber?
That's what we talked about when we adopted the building code, that says there's no, no fire, once construction begins, shall be permitted, which proposes to burn construction-related items, except what the fire chief approves.
And.
And brush is yard waste.
Well, that's not construction.
There's a brush.
Well, it says burn brush and scrap lumber.
In that original text, yeah.
Anyway. Well, I'm trying to get a hundred fifty yard, uh. I'm, I'm still saying if, if we're gonna make any exceptions, let's talk about what the exceptions are there. For land developers and builders, we're not gonna have an exception for a homeowner of any kind?
No, this should not be just for landowner, developers and builders.
Why can't we at least put homeowner in there in addition to those other things, and then? That, that, the exception should apply to everybody. Well, according to this, there are no exceptions whatsoever for a homeowner, only for a builder or a developer.
Right.
Can't we just add in homeowner? And then we can discuss later what exceptions we want to apply to who, but that completely excludes the homeowner for anything. And I'm gonna have some neighbors that are really upset about it.
I guess we need to talk about the pros and cons of burning.
Well, I think philosophically, we need to decide where we're going before we start to try to model this word by word.
Everybody is going to be, um, mad about not being able to burn their yard trash until their house burns down.
Right.
When they burn neighbors' homes, yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I think it's something, it, it, I, I wish we had an alternative because I don't like my neighbor piling up all of his leaves in the front yard and throwing a match, I'll put gas on it first, and then throw a match in it when the wind's blowing towards my house.
I don't like driving through it when I drive down Holiday Island Drive and it comes into my car and chucks.
I realize, I ask that equitability, but, but I don't like the alternative, which is people are throwing them over the hill. I ask that a lot, I don't like it at all, but, but I don't like the alternative, which is people are throwing them over the hill and causing another potential hazard. So, I, 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 I don't know what the solution is.
We have a comment from the public?
I oppose to that because if anybody has health factors, it's very, very, you know, irritating to, to those individuals.
It can be two houses down.
Respiratory problems, you have any type of, of a medical situation that could, you know, pose problems with the burning, asthma.
Okay, I, I would find it just as long as I'm one of the exceptions. You're not, I don't.
I don't know what, I don't.
I, I just think, I, I think the exceptions, you know, that, that apply to homeowners also because.
Well, I'm just saying, I.
I, I've come up with all kinds of trash from my tree. I got a whole lot of trees that I don't burn leaves.
We're gonna burn, ban burning. I guess that's really my point. Shouldn't we not do it for everybody? Or include homeowners with developers and, I mean, I don't know why we're giving them something that a homeowner doesn't have.
I, I think you just need to have some.
I think we need to develop a way to pick up yard waste and, and.
I don't think anybody disdrew with that.
Limbs or whatever and make arrangements somehow to take care of it that way.
Or we keep trying to find like the city ban burning, burning, but there's a big recycling plant probably the size of three football fields where you could haul stuff to and dump it.
But here, even the hauling, to and dumping, unless you would hire, you know, Israel or somebody to do it, most people here wouldn't have the wherewithal to be able to haul their yard.
I guess my wife'd get upset if I put that in her car.
No, I guess I don't, you know, we, we give contractors the, you know, the, we make the exception for the contractor to burn stumps and brush, basically. Uh, we don't give them the exception of burn construction materials. So, you know, we could, we could make the exception for everybody. Anybody can burn yard waste as long as they're under the same controls that we put on the builder, which says that they have to have, uh, that they can only burn certain times of the day. It's gotta be put out before four o'clock at night. Um, they have to have water there while it's burning and, uh, you know.
But one of the things it says is, uh, don't burn on, can't burn on windy days. What the hell does that mean?
We've got a burn ban that, that put the signs up and everything.
I know, but couldn't it say that?
Well, it says, it says you have to notify, if you're gonna burn.
You have to.
What we allow for in the building code is, if you're gonna burn, you have to talk, you have to notify the fire.
And they won't give you one.
If, if it's, if it's not safe to burn, you won't.
So, these guys along Holiday Island Drive that are burning leaves in their little trenches in front of their house,
Right.
they call the fire popper, should that.
They don't, they don't today, but if they're gonna allow it, if they're, if we're gonna allow it in here, then they would have, then I think we would have to have some sort of control over it. Otherwise, why even have a section in here about burning if we're not gonna control it at all? If anybody can burn anything anytime they want, anywhere they want.
I, I, I'm not arguing with you. I think it should include homeowners.
Yeah.
But.
Um, you're gonna, you're gonna get a lot of pushback, huh, if you don't allow.
And, and, I mean, yeah, we're gonna get pushback on just about everything we do.
People have been, people are used to being able to do anything they can do.
If they do it with.
Which is a problem.
Problem.
Well, I don't, no, I don't have to gather. That's right.
So, all we need to do is add homeowners. I don't need to, well, they're not, that's not gonna apply to any homeowners, because a hundred and fifty feet, I presume that's what you meant. Still would knock out almost any home.
That's correct. It's like what we do for adult entertainment, half a mile away.
I don't have a problem with it. I just wanna make it.
Well, how did we write that?
I don't know. Well, just put them in a, in with contractors and everything else and make the restrictions the same for everybody. I just don't like it being different. I don't like the idea that a contractor can do something that a homeowner cannot do.
All right, why don't we do this? We're a long ways away from having something hashed out here. Why don't, why don't we just, for now, so we can get something passed next week, just reserve, reserve this whole section of burning?
I would like us at least to consider if Carroll County solid waste is not in a position to haul off debris and limbs and yard waste that we maybe find a hauler that would haul it off.
See, that, I would feel a lot better about completely banning burning if we gave somebody a reasonable option to do with piles of leaves in their yard.
It'd be safer for everybody.
And, and I just do not like it, one of these days, somebody's gonna be smoking on the golf course, throwing their cigar over the hill, and we're gonna have a fire under the oak trees on five or seven or six.
Three or nine?
We came dangerously close a couple of years ago. They were burning leaves. The golf course maintenance guys were burning leaves on the driving range down by the creek, and it got into the woods. And the fact that we had a hiking trail there that provided a fire break probably saved our ass.
Well, and, and, and that's a natural accumulation.
For being recorded. I didn't mean.
But that's a natural accumulation up around five is more than a natural accumulation.
There was a fire in the woods behind the fire department not too long ago.
Yeah.
Well, I, if, we need to think.
Well, for purposes of this, for the purposes of this, um, workshop, I'm gonna reserve.
Entire five oh eight, right? The whole thing?
No, just five oh eight, ten, and eleven. Cause those are the two paragraphs that deal with burning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hinder drainage.
That's fine.
And by the way, I'm, I'm writing a very, I don't know, not very long, about a one pager to add to the building code about drainage.
In five oh eight, twelve, that we're at?
Yeah.
Last sentence, vacant lot not owned to pass tenants or by said person, rather just not owned?
Yes, yes, I already, um, added that in my copy.
So, you're at?
Change it from O W E N to O W E N D.
There, there's something, something that, that I need to figure out before we, before we actually pass this. For some reason, and again, I copied this from another city, but they revisit fines and penalties over and over and over again.
Because it has to do with each section.
Yeah.
They, they're assigning the penalty to each section so that if, if it's severable, you know, if something happens to one section, it doesn't pay away the rest of it.
But it, 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 it generally says, like, like in this particular case, that any person convicted of violating this ordinance, well, the ordinance is Title eleven or Title five or whatever. Um, so it probably should say this, you know, section.
This chapter.
Or this chapter or something.
If it's in every, if it's in every chapter, then it'd be this chapter.
Yeah.
Chi- chapter five oh eight, not oh eight.
Five oh eight.
Okay, nuisance abatement. Open for comments. All right, I'm paging. I'm up to five oh nine oh four.
Five oh nine oh four. I don't, I'm gonna hand that paragraph, I don't know what's.
Coming back, I'm sorry, I'm catching up. In section five oh nine oh two, C, I added words at the end of that to say, and filed with the secretary of the city planning commission. So, it's details of granting and modifications, so that we get a record of it. It isn't just gonna be the code enforcement officer doing his thing in his files, but to let the city planning commission know.
You've got, you're in the sentence after.
I'm, I'm just adding the words. It says entered in the department files and I added, and filed with the secretary of the city planning commission. That's what I suggested.
Yes.
In C, five oh nine two, C, at the very end of that.
I like that. I had a, a question about five oh nine two, which was just a little bit above that. About the code enforcement officers paragraph.
Just let me, uh, let me finish up Lynn's thought on this. And, and filed with.
The secretary of the city planning commission. Rather than the, than the chair, I thought, well, at least the secretary, because he's got the facilities to get it documented and there's his responsibility.
So, is five oh nine oh two the main place where the job of the code enforcement officer is defined?
No, this is part of.
Pretty much.
It kinda establishes the position.
Yeah, and their duties and.
Uh, it, it says they're duly sworn and authorized.
Yeah.
Does that mean they're sworn in? Cause it, and the last sentence also says duly sworn law enforcement officers of Carroll County.
Yeah, I, I need to revisit that there, you know, that, most cities, the code enforcement officer is actually a sworn officer, meaning they, they can serve, they can issue the warrants and stuff like that, um, the citations.
But they're not act, act, actual police officers. They don't have to have.
They're a.
Clean certification.
I don't know. Danny, Danny explained it to me. Um, they're, they're almost like a police officer. They're a sworn officer and, you know, they have to, you know, they have to qualify to be a sworn officer.
They have to swear to uphold the constitution of the state of Arkansas or something like that.
Yeah, but it, but there's, there are, you know, there are qualifications to be a sworn officer.
They probably have to sign something.
Not just, and I think there's actually training and, and, and testing and stuff like that that.
Okay.
That, that you're, that, that you know what you're doing when you're issuing a citation.
In the next, next sentence.
And in our case, in our case, we would intend for the deputy, if it ever gets to the point of issuing a citation, that the deputy would actually serve that warrant or that citation because they are a sworn officer. So, I need to revisit.
Oh, so this needs to be reworded then.
I'm not sure that we're going to require our code enforcement officer to be a sworn officer.
Okay, okay, maybe not.
Can we get, can we get from Danny or whomever what those requirements are?
Yeah.
It also said the code enforcement officer shall carry proper identification and present it when performing their duties.
And I think that, um, that, that would be appropriate anyway, even if he is not a sworn officer. We would need to provide that with some sort of.
Card or badge or something.
Like business cards.
Or a badge.
Yeah, a badge.
You know, like to wear a badge of some sort.
Big stars.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I will double check that and. All right, next.
I, I'd say if I title nine oh four violations, that, that sentence didn't make sense.
Which, which.
Too far, Dana.
I don't know. I wasn't, nobody said anything. I thought we were done with five oh nine oh two.
Still looking over.
Okay.
Dan, I noted in paragraph E and you know, two, bullet number four, city's not capitalized. In most of this document, we have the word city capitalized.
I already changed that.
Okay.
All right, rate of entry.
Where are we at?
Five oh nine oh three.
Five oh nine oh three.
Can we go back up to D? I mean, E?
Uh.
Is that, is that even necessary? I mean, to spell out that the.
Wait, who, who was the arbitrator of what's frivolous? I, maybe we should just, that's a bit ambiguous.
It might establish expectations for the community to know that just because they file a complaint, we don't have to act on it.
Right, we ought to put a penalty in there for frivolous claims. Well, I know, I mean.
Well, they might not consider it frivolous when they file it.
Are we the ones that determine what's frivolous?
I don't know.
I guess so.
I, I, I don't know if that's necessary.
I guess it's debatable.
Somebody's, somebody else's city attorney thought it was worth putting in there.
Right, cause the next one talks about substantive evidence, uh, evidentiary value.
You are.
These are legal terms. I don't know.
Start with this, you're gonna get frivolous.
Well, a lot of times a neighbor reports something, they don't have the evidence. They want you to go find the evidence, you know.
Always frivolous is kind of an eye of the beholder at times too.
Yeah, I, I.
So, I, I, that's ambiguous. I'll, we just, we'll deal with it, I guess.
I guess this would be the excuse, what, somebody calls in a complaint and you don't do anything about it and you say, great paragraph E.
Yeah.
I think it gives the code enforcement officers a way out in deciding whether or not it's worth pursuing.
This is one of those things that'll play out over time. We'll find out how it works or definitely.
There's not, if, yeah.
I think all this stuff is gonna be a one-time, you know, that's gonna fly.
Of course, perfect is written. That's why it's gonna engrave it on stone so we can. His name Moses. Amos Moses. Are we at three?
We're at three, yeah. I'm on three.
I have nothing with it.
Three look good to me, but.
No comments from me.
I just don't understand.
Up to four?
I don't understand A.
You don't understand four, A?
Yeah.
There's a definition of strict liability misdemeanor. I looked it up, but I don't remember what it is.
Me too. I don't remember.
It's a strict liability misdemeanor means that you didn't have to, you don't, you don't have to prove intent. If, if, um, I think is what, what it says, that, uh, if, um.
Oh, it's a liability whether they intended it or not.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I will.
So, in B, do we wanna include court of process, post prosecution?
Yes, I put that into the subject of confirmation from adjustment that we can do that.
Or should, or shouldn't?
Yeah.
I just think the penalty's a little bit low. I, I doubled it, basically, in my recommendation. In A, making a hundred bucks, and B, two fifty, and C, five hundred. We're serious about this. We should put a fine on there that's serious. It's like the A D E Q. It's ten thousand dollars per dump of garbage in your front yard. That's the fine. Ten grand.
I think they were wrong on that. I think it's twenty five thousand.
Okay.
Cause I just read that.
Okay.
No, I agree with Lynn, that they need to be.
It's, this is the same thing we had in the other one. It says each day such shall be considered a separate offense and should be punished as such. So, first day you do it, it's twenty five dollars, the second day it's fifty.
And I suggest it be a hundred for the second day. And I suggest it be a hundred for the second day.
And I, I think that there's probably some general, general, um.
Limitation?
Well, I, I think that there's, I think in general, the, the judge has discretion as to whether or not to adjust the fines also.
Anyway, and I thought, you know, we went to that district court that day, they, the fines were not very large.
Well, it depends on how many things you did wrong, that one poor girl. She opened container, driving with a suspended license.
Well, I know many.
No proof of insurance, she was up to twenty-five hundred bucks before she batted her eyes three times, so.
And under B, are you gonna put chapter five oh nine?
Instead.
Instead of any of the several.
Of this code?
Yeah.
Not me.
Somebody's vibrator plays tunes. All right.
Under C, citations implies our code enforcement officer would need a citation book?
Yeah.
Are, but are they, it depends on if they're issuing the citations or the deputy, would the deputy use his own citation book or a city? Uh.
I ask.
City statute citation book.
Whatever the rules of criminal procedure is.
They, um, it's actually written on a state citation, according to Bobby Ray, what, top of at length, he used to call the enforcement officer, Eddie Springs. And he is a sworn officer, because he's also a part-time policeman, but, um, he says that, uh, code enforcement violations like this, it's the actual citations. Are written on a state citation, so I, I need to find out more about that.
I assume a citation book is pre-numbered and you kind of have to account for each citation, there's copies that are part of the citation book that get filed somehow.
I don't know, but, um, whenever we find, identify who our code enforcement officer is.
Go figure it out.
I'm going to recommend that that person's job shadow, either Bobby Ray or, or, um, hmm, the guy. Just as I am, Kim something or other in Maryville, um, they've been very, very cooperative or so far. The fastest way to learn is just follow along with somebody and watch what they do. Appeals, anything on that?
Oh, yeah, I had a question on appeals, it kind of struck me strange when I read the way this was worded. If you plead guilty, can, can you go then and appeal? You're pleaded guilty?
Well, same deal, no contest.
It made no sense, they have no contest, same thing, yeah.
Same deal, no contest.
That, that struck me as very strange.
That's just lawyer's.
If you plead guilty to a crime, you don't get to appeal it, do you?
Well, can you.
I don't think you appeal a no contest either, that's the same.
Yeah.
Probably, I don't know.
That's not to keep you around.
I'll have adjustment.
Yeah.
I mean, that's lawyer's. And, and Rattan, get out, I said.
Like I said, somebody else's, some Conway lawyer wrote that, so.
Five oh nine oh five, paragraph A, next to last line, starts with business licenses, signed permits, building permits, I inserted construction in front of electrical. Took out and, put another slash in front of plumbing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did that, yeah.
Okay. In section B, bullet four, insert city in front of the state.
Yep, got that.
Oh, city and study.
I put city slash city.
All right, under C. Anything for C, moving on to D. It just basically says we can revoke.
They can just.
Prevents some licenses, there's violations. Moving on to five oh nine oh six. Under, under A, Lynn, uh, inserted, uh, date and time of violation observed, date and time notice of violation is documented. Date and time notice of violation is posted on property, date and time notice of violation is sent to property owner and method of service. And attached photographs and video evidence.
I just think that's important for documenting the event and then setting the times, because our times start when certain things happen.
Right, good point.
And under item four, again, questioning court cost and cost of prosecution. Anything for B? C, under transfer of ownership. It just says that you can't sell your house because somebody, uh, because a big violation was uncovered. D, exceptions. Okay, five oh nine oh seven, condemnation. Hopefully that'll never come to that.
Yeah, it will.
It will, I mean.
It should.
The district, the district has had to destroy property, structures before, you know.
Uh, it's just because they temporarily ended up with ownership of them. They didn't have to go through a condemnation process.
That's true.
This does happen, it's a very, very long drawn-out ordeal. And usually it, uh, won't happen unless the city has the money to deal with it once it's condemned. There was something on the Springfield news about that this morning, how many, you know, um, condemnable properties they have in Springfield that are just sitting there with no action being taken.
But the, the longer you wait.
The worse it gets.
The worse it gets, I mean, we had that in, in Oklahoma, we, we ended up with three hundred condemned houses and we just had to, I mean, we started budgeting for fifty a year to get them, to get them gone.
I, I know there was an instance, this has been years ago, um, but there was an instance where there was a trailer in, what, probably unit one. And, uh, the neighbors had reported that there were eagles and everything on the grounds of the property and, and the trailer was wide open, not being used, it was vacated. And there were children playing around the trailer in the lot.
You get that, you get homeless people that squatters that move in.
I mean, that, that's a clear situation where you'd want to condemn it and get rid of them.
All right, under, uh, paragraph G, um, Lynn brought up that, uh, we want, I, I need to update this to reflect our actual notification or publica- notification of.
How we notify the public.
How we notify the public, thank you. So I'll update that section. And then under H, again, the cost of prosecution, I, same thing, J, same thing, K. Lynn raised the question, should we include that the court shall order that court costs and court and cost of prosecution be awarded to the city?
Yeah, that's the first time I put it in and I went back and shortened it to the cost of prosecution.
Yeah, because the court costs you're not gonna get.
Right.
That goes to the judge and to cover the clerk's costs and stuff.
But it's the same comment, the rest of court costs and cost of prosecution.
Okay. Anything on five oh nine oh eight? Oh nine?
This is where I inserted the definition, oh, uh, under bathroom, uh, a room containing plumbing fixtures including a bathtub or shower. What about the toilet and sink? Is that, is that different than a tub and shower room?
Yes, that's, that's a toilet.
Toilet room?
By definition.
Yeah, it, and that was in here, it was a bedroom.
Toilet room is? Probably isn't. Toilet room, water closet or urinal both, but not a bathtub or shower, okay, it's fine then.
I'm sure these definitions are.
Again, I'm just custom paced with that out.
I spent some time.
In code enforcement officer definition, I capitalize city. Any city employee.
Okay.
Will you capitalize on city?
Yeah, city is capitalized in most, in every occurrence except for the whole bunch of.
That's.
Thanks, we're trying to correct every one of them.
Okay.
Yeah. That implies D city, not a generic city.
Right. At the bottom of page fourteen, public way. I know that the city has no such streets.
But they may.
They may, but any street alley or similar parcel of land essentially unobstructed from the ground to the sky. Which is deeded, dedicated or otherwise permanently.
Parcel of land essentially unobstructed from the ground to the sky, which is deeded, dedicated or otherwise.
Perused.
Appropriated for public use.
I think so.
What, what's your problem with that?
We don't have any such streets that are deeded, dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated for public use, we don't have any streets. The city doesn't.
Not yet.
Okay.
But we will, by the time I, I was paid.
Okay. All right. What I didn't want to do was open that big can of worms. No.
Well.
If you don't want one, you must be going.
Yeah, I.
Okay, that's fine.
I wonder if the fact that it doesn't say otherwise appropriated by the city for public use. I mean, we have streets out here that are appropriated by somebody for public use that are within our boundaries. So would that be covered up?
It's been fine public way.
Yeah, you need to find for use.
Where's the U just? Public way, fine. Public way.
I, I guess we could change that, instead of for public use, we could say a permanently appropriated by the city. That way, if, like, you know, if we pass an ordinance accepting something as a public way, then, then by definition.
Cause it's used in five oh eight, it's used in five oh nine dot eight, under closing streets.
Oh.
Five oh nine dot eight.
Well, we'd want to be able to close streets on by my side if there were issues. Cause that, you know, you're talking about an emergency at a lot or a structure that you're trying to get under control somehow.
The district's incredible here.
Where's the term public way used?
I found it first in five oh nine dot oh eight, under closing streets, paragraph B. Five oh, it's on page twelve.
We just talked about it a minute ago.
Five oh nine oh eight, B.
In the B.
Says, public ways adjacent to unsafe structures and prohibit the same from being utilized.
Yeah, I mean, in practical terms here, if, if there's a problem, the code enforcement officer is gonna get with, you know, the fire chief and, and Kenny DeAr to. Put barricades up to close the street, so. I don't, I don't really see where, I will change the for public use to appropriated by the city. I'll have to go back and.
Actually, kind of the way, way this is worded is it could be. Deeded, dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated by anybody for public use.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's worded now.
And it seems like you'd want that, because one, streets out here are gonna be under the public use of the district. Where the city would still want to maintain the safety of property along that public way. So I'd say don't change it. Leave it open for.
I, I, I think I'm gonna just leave it for public use, because I don't think that opens up any can of worms.
Okay.
We, you know, we have an understanding that, that, um, the. The streets that the district retains responsibility for are licensed for public use or whatever, um. In practical terms, it won't be a problem, I'm pretty sure.
On page fifteen, rubbish. The last line, dust, another similar insert trash materials?
Yeah, I, I put that in.
Okay. And then on fifteen is where I inserted the definition for trash.
Yep.
Okay.
Got that.
You're all.
You know, uncut weeds and grass is another one that's going to be a can of worms, because there's. Now, are we going to include the, um, you know, twenty-five hundred unimproved lots in Holloway Island? As, as being required that they, uh, cut weeds and grass.
Five oh nine eleven says it's only the lots adjoining developed lots.
Is that what I, I've already tried to deal with that.
Yes, I think somewhere it's in here.
I know, that's, that's up five oh nine eleven D.
Good luck on getting those outstate property owners to do that.
Yeah, again, are we jumping to that section now? Well, it's not, it's. Let's not, let's just make sure we got it uncovered first. We're done with descriptions. Five oh nine ten?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Going down to D one.
I don't know where that comes from, that looks like it.
Well, here's, here's a, here's an interesting thing with five oh nine ten B, responsibility. When you think of the situation of the street. A person shall not permit another person to occupy the premises which are not in a sanitary and safe condition. So it sounds like the owner of a property can, should prevent a tenant from occupying if it's in an unsanitary condition. Now, I wonder if that means if the tenant caused the unsanitary condition, if they still have the responsibility to prevent.
Where, where are you?
I'm on B, five oh nine ten B.
B, okay.
Just under the definitions. It's the second sentence.
She went back up here. That's what it says. It says the owner is responsible for making sure the tenant keeps it clean. Or it can kick him out.
Kick it.
Except that he can't. Except that he can't.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. If the code enforcement officer says that this property is not habitable.
Then you can't rent it.
Then people have, have to move, the landlord needs to deal with it. I don't think, you know, evicting somebody is difficult, but I don't think removing somebody from an unsafe or unsanitary condition is difficult.
I hope so. I hope you can.
We talked about that a couple hours.
That might make the difference in the situation, yeah. The fact that they've made the property other than.
Right. Right.
Okay. But at some point, the owner has to be held responsible.
Okay, where are we at? How far did we get here?
Five oh nine eleven.
That's where I'm reading it, I'm not sure where.
I'm on, I'm still on five ten D one, Lynn inserted along a common street front.
That's five eleven.
That's five eleven.
That's five eleven?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind, five eleven.
There you.
I'm all the way down to five eleven D.
What, what's that thing about illegal dumping? That doesn't have anything to do with grating and drainage down. And we've covered that innumerable places before.
Well, depending on where you dump it, could it be drainage?
Where's the drainage down?
I know we had some place before.
B?
B is a boy.
B one?
B one, grating. In five oh, okay, in dot eleven D, grass and weeds, defining a property as undeveloped, as adjacent to a developed property, I inserted along a common street front, so it didn't deal with the guy with the lot behind me.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I, and I put that in there.
Okay.
Then you also wanted to add a, a joint by.
I'm just asking a question, a joint by a common rear property, what about those lots? What about adjacent owned?
I don't know. There's no way in hell you're going to enforce that.
You enforce it with fines and citations.
Well, you got all kinds of vacant lots down here in ECU. How am I going to get somebody going and?
Are they adjacent to a developed property?
Sure.
Well, then, with the ordinance in place, the, the owner with the improvement says, the guy next to me is not taking care of his lot. We inspect it and we fine him.
But you're only going to do a fifteen foot swath.
Right, that's what I thought. It's not very much.
It's like, almost ridiculous.
That's probably the width of the easement.
Yeah, the, the maximum side.
Well, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't.
The middle is five feet.
So you got a fifteen foot bump, you gotta go down and clear out fifteen foot on each side of your lot.
That, 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 we need to stop, I mean, this whole paragraph is probably null and void.
Okay.
Because the property owners don't own any of the street front. All of the property lines are well back from the street. So if we're, if we're wanting people to, as, as written here, the, the person would have to find wherever their lot line is and then mow fifteen feet back from that. But there would still be tall grass between their lot line and the street. And that's possible, sure.
I was thinking more along the side borders of a lot. When it's called adjacent property.
It says, it says all, it doesn't define, it says fifteen foot bumper all the way around the lot.
And this is not talking about the street front of the noncompliant property. Talking about it being adjacent to developed property and mowing along the sideline. Side property boundary, I think. To me, fifteen feet won't make any difference in the appearance of a property.
Well, remember, he got this from Conley, which, you know, were not penetrations in Conley property.
You don't have a, a whole lot of.
And subdivision property owners either.
No.
It ain't going to happen, guys.
This section here, this, this section D, a lot of this is mine. Because I was trying to come up with a way of dealing with people mowing, you know, keeping the weeds down on, on their lot, but not, without requiring everybody that owns a lot, you know, like me, I have two lots on Holiday Island Drive, you know. But there, there's no health or sanitation issue with the grass growing up on my lots. So I, I don't want to make everybody that's got a lot out in the woods, you know, mow the grass on their lot. But I do want to be able to get some control over the developed areas.
Yeah, so you drive along Lakeside and on the west end of it, there's a lot in the middle of all those developed lots, and the grass is four feet high. The fifteen feet would least give us a buffer for those weeds and control of penetrating into the developed lot. That's what the fifteen feet's for. It helps, it helps. It doesn't prevent at all. But still, like you said, you're going to have fifteen feet on the left and fifteen feet on the right, in the middle, it's four feet tall.
Yeah.
I guess.
It's totally surrounded by developed lots.
If I owned the adjacent lot, I would just make a deal with the owner of the other lot to mow that fifteen foot bumper for him.
Could do that.
Well, what about the situation which I would be in, is that the, the, the lot that I bought next to my developed property is, it is not grass, it is like a big oak tree.
It's trees, trees and cedars.
Trees and branches.
This is talking about grass and weeds, not talking about cedars and trees.
You got small.
If I mow around those trees.
Huh?
It'd have to go.
Good luck. All around them.
Yeah, if there's grass growing, but.
And there's a lot for sale over on Tableau, if I have to do that.
Yeah, I got one too, that.
I'm still hung up on the fact, though, that, that the district actually owns the land, but you know, in most cases, um.
Well.
Probably a good fifteen, twenty feet back from the edge of the road.
What are you going to do with that, if they don't mean?
So we're going to have to involve the district in a discussion about what we're going to require for vegetation control.
Shoulder control.
It, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of been a little bit of a pet peeve of mine for a long time with the district, even when I was on board, that we spend so much, so many, expense so many resources mowing all of Holiday Island Drive. All of the rural part of Holiday Island Drive is manicured. You know, mowed multiple times a summer with a riding lawnmower. But then, you know, other parts of Holiday Island, you know, never get the ditches cut at all. And you go up, you know, to the really populated area and unless the neighbors mow the vacant lot next door to them, you know, they, they, they don't, you know, the district doesn't do anything with them. So what makes Holiday Island Drive so special that it gets manicured and everything else gets ignored?
Well, because just about everybody that comes in or out of Holiday Island, comes down to Holiday Island Drive, that's your first impression of the, of the city.
Yeah, but they, they drive past several lots with grass growing up this high right up to the road.
But very few people drive past, you know, Opelika Drive.
And that, that's the, that's the rationale that's always been offered by the district is that it's, you know, it's we're all, it's, it's where everybody drives that comes into Holiday Island.
They do the same thing with, they do the same thing with Woodsdale, so.
I mean, I think you have to realize the limitations of your resources and.
For purposes of our, of our.
Grass and weed ordinance.
Grass and weeds ordinance, we are going to have to consider, though, the fact that the district owns a lot of the land that we're talking about. And I don't want to pass an ordinance that they can't deal with.
I have a problem with D two. One of the excludes the suburban improvement district from having to maintain those areas when we've got a situation with bamboo on the corner up to the asphalt on the road. Can't see around the corner. And when we had a fire in our driveway and in our garage, the fire truck drove to the other end of Bandy Drive because they couldn't see down our street.
Wow.
So we do have in our ordinance a sightline for corners that we can deal with the bamboo problem on that.
And it's, I think.
We can deal with that.
From the position of the water meters, I'd say almost all of this is on district property. Because I think some water meters are on district property.
They're right on the property line.
And they're on the inside of the bamboo.
Yeah, that bamboo problem corner could be covered with our sightline problem, our corner sightline. Don't you get interested?
We're, we're not going to be able to hammer this out before next week's city council meeting because of the fact that I, I need to get the district involved in this.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to, you know, put section D as being reserved for now, and we'll get back into it. Now, it's after lunch, do we want to keep going or do we want to? Take a break and, and you can, people can feed me any questions they have or comments or updates to the rest of this. I can mark up a draft with the suggested changes in yellow or red. And send it back to everybody and still maybe try to knock out a, a, you know, at least a portion of this that we can pass next week.
That, 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 the way that's went, the way Lynn did the.
The zoning.
Whatever we.
The zoning regs.
Yes, I mean, that worked well with highlighting the changes and suggestions.
The format I used was whatever I added is in yellow highlight, and then my red, red is my concern.
If, if everybody, if I, if I sent this version to everybody, and I think I did, I had, I highlighted the changes in yellow too.
Okay.
Did he, did he get that?
I didn't get one.
I didn't get any.
I don't think he sent one copy to people, Dan. I didn't get a copy, you know.
I don't know, I think he did.
I don't think it got posted on our website.
No, it's definitely not on the website.
Okay.
If you, if none of you have anything yet highlighted in yellow, then, then you don't have the copy with Lynn's edits. But send me your edits and your, or your questions, and I will add them in and highlight them in yellow and redistribute it to everybody.
So are we going to schedule a follow-up workshop or something?
Is we now on next? Two.
No. We're going to do it at the regular meeting, right?
But if he doesn't get it hammered out with the, with the ordinance, it ought to be posted by Friday.
Right?
Right.
Or you just post an ordinance up to the point where you stop. You just do an ordinance with that stuff that we've covered.
And then what, add the other by amendment that night?
Or with a different ordinance.
I think. Well, you get, anything?
We can add to the, the codes with new ordinances, just to, you know.
Okay, so just a doc as.
Yeah, through five oh eight or something, and then, you know, beyond that could be another ordinance of a later date.
Have to run through the building code and add a whole bunch of it.
Add it to it. That makes sense.
Okay.
Now, we, you know, we'll prioritize for next week's meeting, we'll prioritize the parts that cover the, the imminent persistent problems with, you know, with property. And then leave some of these that are lesser issues like vegetation control, maybe to another workshop and another ordinance.
You could also schedule a special meeting after the regular meeting to approve something.
Yeah. All right, so we're leaving off on road stopping point is Road Harbor. All right, motion to adjourn the workshop.
Subtle. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Jerry made the motion, Lynn seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.